All right, I think that we have a quorum. I see Commissioner Lovett, I see Commissioner Mark Fields, I see Commissioner Fan, I see Commissioner Presley. And do we have Commissioner Bryant joining us via phone?
Yes.
Okay, great, yes, okay, we have a call. All right, very well. So ladies and gentlemen, good evening, I'm Sean Atkins, Chair of the East Point Planning, one second. We'll do a restart, is our court reporter here with us this evening?
She will not be here this evening, but she's looking forward to the recording.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so we'll restart. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Commissioner Miller has joined us too. I'm Sean Atkins, Chair of the East Point Planning and Zoning Commission, and today is August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. And at this time, I will call our regularly scheduled meeting for the month of August to order. Staff, would you please sound quorum, would you please sound roll call to establish a quorum?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Mark Fields.
Present.
Commissioner Joseph Fields.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lovett.
Here.
Commissioner Fan.
Commissioner Fan, you're on mute, could you unmute and sound here for the record? Let's come back to Commissioner Fan.
Commissioner Bryant.
Commissioner Bryant, you're also on mute. Okay, we'll come back to Commissioner Bryant. Go ahead.
I'm here, fan here.
Okay, that was Commissioner Fan. Thank you.
Commissioner Presley.
Here, present. Good afternoon.
Commissioner McKnight.
She will not be joining us this evening, she's not feeling her best.
All right, back to Commissioner Bryant.
Okay, so we do have a quorum, and we can then also get Commissioner Bryant to sound here to perfect the record. But um, let me let Commissioner McKnight. Okay.
All right, Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
All right, thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I don't see the agenda, so I'm not quite sure. Do we have a moment of silence next? I think I have it here.
The agenda should be posted.
Yes, thank you so very much, Ms. Solomon. And ladies and gentlemen, we have established a form at this time. I will ask everyone to please join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. Commissioners, the agenda is before us, and we have a few cases under new business. And I've also sent out an email regarding a couple of the cases. And so I think that we may be able to work through some of those things, but the agenda is before us. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Mr. Chair. I move that we accept the agenda as posted.
Okay, is there a second?
There are a second.
Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Lovett, seconded by Commissioner Fields, that we adopt our agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 It was actually me.
Let's the Miller. Oh, did I say, I said, did I say something else?
Yes.
Okay, I'm so very sorry. The motion was made by Commissioner Lovett, seconded by Commissioner Miller. I want to perfect the record, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say a nay. Hearing on the eyes have it, the agenda is adopted. We have no cases under old business. Our first case under new business is case number two zero two three U as an umbrella dash zero zero one dash zero six. It's a special use permit. This would require, as will the other items on our agenda, a public hearing. And so at this time, if you give me a second, I will read our rules for public hearings, just one second, please. All right. Public hearings before the Planning and Zoning Commission shall be conducted in accordance with section ten dash two two one nine of the East Point Zoning Code and Development Regulations. As we continue to continually meet virtually due to COVID nineteen pandemic, we're utilizing this telemeeting platform to act upon planning and zoning cases as they come before this commission. As such, I am asking each participant other than commissioners and staff to mute their devices. Once we get to parts of the agenda that require public input, those who have notified staff of their desire to speak will be recognized to speak. If you did not notify staff but desire to speak, please use the raise hand or chat function to be recognized. Public hearings, rules are as follows. Persons both favoring and opposing the proposed case will be provided an opportunity to address the commission. The applicant for the zoning case or the applicant's designated representative, if any, will be entitled to speak first, followed by other speakers in favor of the proposal for a total of fifteen minutes. Those who oppose the proposed zoning case will then be permitted to speak for a total of fifteen minutes. By majority vote, the commission may increase the total time speakers may have, provided that each side is given the same amount of time. If there is more than one speaker per side, the chair or the presiding officer may limit the time allotted to each individual speaker other than the zoning applicant. The zoning applicant may reserve a portion of his or her allotted time for rebuttal. Speakers must adhere to the rules of the quorum. Prior to speaking, each speaker shall identify him or herself and shall state his or her current address. Each speaker shall speak only to the merits of the proposed zoning ordinance under consideration, shall address remarks only to the commission, and shall refrain from making personal attacks on any other speaker. The presiding officer may refuse a speaker the right to continue if after first being cautioned, the speaker continues to violate the rules of the quorum. Ladies and gentlemen, you have heard our rules for public here. Let's see here. So again, our first case is two zero two three U as an umbrella dash zero zero one dash zero six. The address is one eight two six Chapman Avenue, so special use permit. Staff, would you please sound the caption for this agenda item?
Yes, Mr. Chair, in reference to item number one, case number two zero two three U dash zero zero one dash zero six. The applicant is Kaya McBride. The location is eighteen twenty-six Chapman Avenue. The request, the applicant is requesting a special use permit to convert an existing garage into inhabitable accessory structure. The case type is special use permit.
Thank you so much, Ms. Solomon. And is the applicant present this evening?
Yes.
Okay, so Ms. McBride, again, state your first and last name, your current address, and the floor is yours. And if there are any visuals that you have from your presentation, the staff will need to pull up. Or if you need the share screen, please let staff know so that we may facilitate that for you.
Thank you so much, my name is Kaya McBride at address eighteen twenty-six Chapman Ave. First, I want to thank you all for your time tonight, and I will be sharing my screen if that's okay.
Yes, you have the capabilities.
Hi. And can everybody see?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Um, so my project is a proposal of converting the detached garage that's behind the home into a edible habitable accessory dwelling unit. Um, and that's pretty much what this slide is just going over to project details. Location is in the it's off of, oh, Sardan's Garden off of Washington Road in Sims Ave. And it's in the Center Park neighborhood. And as far as the garage is the six hundred square foot existing detached garage, the conversion will be interior facing. It'll essentially be kind of like a studio space, so no separate bedroom, but it does will have a bathroom as well as a kitchen area as detailed in these drawings. And then I've already had a sixty foot permitted parking pad built out. Just made the area nicer and easier to park. So it fits up to three cars and the driveway itself can fit up to four cars. And the parking pad, of course, is behind the main house. So it's all of the parking essentially sits off of the main road. However, there is also, of course, street parking available in front of the main home. And one of the things I've really been enjoying is reading through the comprehensive land use plan. The ADU essentially is a part of the Sustainable Development Plan, allowing for the preservation of existing structures and essentially creating more diverse housing types in this, in the East Point area. This also supports the housing goals of just creating more affordable housing options and continues to maintain the current character and integrity of the communities. So it pretty much will look on the outside, no drastically different than the main house, the same color and everything. And then, again, as I mentioned earlier, it doesn't interfere with the existing streetscape. So the parking pad is one of the many benefits because it does allow for anyone who would be using either the back unit to have their own private parking that's off the street. If they so allow. And then in general, it continues to complement the neighborhood. You pretty much, I mean, you can maybe see it from the street, but for the most part, it's in its own private area. And that's pretty much it thus far. We already had community zoning meetings, so did get to speak in front of some of the community members as well as a planning and zoning work session. And looking forward to hopefully the city council as well. And that is it. And I do want to add that as a part of this process, I did have to send out notification of this project to my neighbors within a five hundred foot radius, so they are aware as well as there are signs that are posted in front of the house for the two of the planning meetings, just so that the neighborhood has the option to come to the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Very well. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning application? Any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning application?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We have six attendees this evening.
Okay, can you see if those attendees are here to speak to the zoning application?
Yes.
Thank you.
Phone number ending in six, three, three, one, would you like to speak regarding this application?
Okay, let's move to the next.
Phone number ending in twenty-one oh seven, would you like to speak in regards to this zoning application? Ms. Jackie Slaughter, would you like to speak in reference to the zoning application? Ms. Jennifer Pace, would you like to speak in reference to the zoning application? As well as Ms. Linda, would you like to speak in reference of this only application? Mr. Chair, we have no attendees who would like to speak in reference to this case.
Okay, I know that Ms. Solomon has asked if there are any attendees here to speak to the case. This portion is reserved for proponents, but since no one's that, since no one spoke up, I'm assuming and that no one is here to speak for or against the zoning application. But I will ask if there are any opponents here to speak against the zoning application, any opponents. If you are here to speak against the zoning application, please use the chat function to inform staff that you're here to speak against the zoning application or the raise hand function. Okay, hearing none and seeing none, commissioners, at this time, I will entertain a motion to close the public here.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Miller.
Make a, I make a motion to close a public hearing.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, it will be closed to public hearing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, say a nay. Hearing on the eyes have it, the public here is now closed, staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Tyler, are you able to share your screen?
Chairman and board, I do apologize, I ran into some technical issues, my computer crashed during the middle of the presentation. However, I am able to pull up my information, it's now just loading back up. I want to read accurately regarding the recommendations, so if you all will, just give me one brief moment, and I will read that to you all. Okay, can everybody hear me?
We can.
Excellent. For the sake of time, I do, I will read the recommendation for this petition. Staff did recommend approval of the applicant's request with no conditions. Staff believes that the request is in line with the other residential properties within the area. And with that information, we believe that the accessory structure would be in compliance with the surrounding area. And I do apologize, we are trying to get the PowerPoint back up, and again, we are having some technical issues. But the recommendation is for approval with no conditions by staff.
Thank you, Mr. Miss Wayne. Commissioners, we've heard from the applicant, and there were no other speakers for this zoning matter. We've also heard staff's recommendation. At this time, I will entertain a motion, because this is a special use permit, commissioners. We are not the final arbiters for this case, and so please make your motion in the form of a recommendation that will move forward to mayor council.
Can I ask my question now, or do I have to wait?
No, your question can only be asked once there is a motion in a second. Because if the motion, if there is not a motion, or if the motion dies, then there are absolutely no discussion for it. So we have to have a motion in a second, and then we can go into discussion.
Okay, I'm making motion that we accept the planning and zoning staff's recommendation for approval for this.
With no conditions?
With no conditions, yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
I think that was Commissioner Presley, is that correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Move by, it has been moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Presley, that this body recommends approval with no conditions for this agenda item. It is case number two zero two three U as an umbrella dash zero zero one dash zero six, eighteen twenty-six Chapman Avenue, special use permit. Commissioner Miller, I know that you have a question, so at this time, you are recognized.
This is to the applicant, I'm just, I'm curious about, do you have family moving into it? Or is it going to be for a rental property? Or is it going to be short-term rentals? What are you thinking?
Um, so a mix of for a family, because they've already, my grandmother's already volunteered herself. And then also, I'm actually leaning more towards renting to traveling nurses and business professionals. So not quite short-term, these would be applicants either anywhere from six months, thirty days to up to a full year, and then also a long-term renters as well.
That's really smart, the traveling nurses is a really great idea.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I'm doing the same thing from one of my, from my ADU.
Oh, awesome, thank you.
That's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Are there any other comments, questions, or concerns for this zoning application? Hearing on and seeing on, commissioners, there's been a motion to recommend approval for case number two zero two three U as an umbrella dash zero zero one dash zero six, eighteen twenty-six Chapman Avenue. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say a nay. Hearing on the eyes have it, this item has been approved. Our next agenda item is two zero two three V as in Victor dash zero zero one dash zero five, two eight one zero Duke of Gloucester. The applicant is Brian Giles, staff, would you please sound the caption for this agenda item?
Yes, Mrs. Chair, in reference to item number two, case number two zero two three V dash zero zero one dash zero five. The applicant is Mr. Brian Giles, that address is twenty-eight ten Duke of Mr. Chair, can you pronounce that?
Gloucester.
Thank you.
Rochester, yes.
Um, the applicant is seeking a string buffer variance for to build an porch and deck on the existing home into the fifty-foot string buffer, that case type is in variance.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Solomon.
You're welcome.
This also requires a public hearing, at this time, I entertain a motion to open the public here for case number two zero two three V as in Victor dash zero zero one dash zero five.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Lovett.
I move that we I move that we hear the case that is presented to us at this time.
Thank you, is there a second?
I don't see the, the case number, so I do not have it in the, you know, in front of me.
No worries. Is there a second to open the public here?
Second, yes, sir.
Been moved by Commissioner Lovett, seconded by Commissioner Miller, that we open the case, we open the public hearing for case number two zero two three V as in Victor dash zero zero one dash zero five, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, say a nay. Hearing on the eyes have it, the public hearing is now open. And I do understand that Mr. Giles is present, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Giles, the floor is yours, do you have any visuals for your presentation?
Uh, yes, and if I could, I'd like to share my screen.
Okay, staff, would you please grant screen sharing capabilities?
Yes, you do have the capability to share your screen this evening.
Wonderful. Thank you. This is, variance is very simple, well, first, let me correct the record. I know on the agenda, it states that this is a variance to build a home, and that is incorrect. The home already exists, home was built roughly around nineteen sixty-five, sixty-six era. So what I'm seeking a variance is just to build an addition to an existing home, to my, to my existing home. So I just want to make, make that clear.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Giles.
Um, let's see if I can share my screen. Does, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Um, let's see, trying to show you something here. All right, what we're looking at is the, see if I can open this up just a little bit, hold on. Okay, if everyone can see the outlined, the outlined red squares with the big square in the middle and the two smaller squares on the north and south side, that is the existing footprint of my home. Along with, in the rear, you see the notation is concrete patio. So that's the existing footprint. I'm seeking a variance merely just to add, make an addition to my home, which is this gray portion here. It's roughly six hundred and twenty square feet. And as it sits now, if you notice, part of my home, just north of that concrete patio, and it already sits with inside, if I can pull up. That already sits within the city's, within the city's buffer zone. This area here is well within the city's buffer zone. So all I'm doing is seeking to add more to my house within, within the city's buffer zone. I can't, as, as the structure is now, I'm prohibited from building to the left of my house because of the existing tree line. I can't build to the, to the right of my house, also because of the existing tree line and my neighbors. So, and it would not be aesthetically appealing to build anything in the front of my house. So therefore, my only option is to build within the back of my house. And I'm essentially building the, if you see the, this part where I'm showing here, it's basically an enlarged portion of the concrete patio, the, the square here. That will be a covered, a covered deck. And the elongated section here will simply be uncovered deck. And, and, and it will lead to my back door, which is here. So I can walk out, one, my back door here, walk out into the uncovered area, proceed up this way towards the larger square to the encut, to the covered area. And all of this, the majority of the gray area is within the city's, within the city's buffer zone. And I'm seeking the variance because I'm limited to adding anything to my property. And I think it's worth noting that both my neighbors to my left and to my right, they have existing structures and have made improvements within the city's buffer zone, but I have not. And I'm seeking to, seeking your approval, the city's approval to do so. That basically sums up my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning matter, any other proponents? Staff, would you please ask if there are any proponents here of those who have called in to speak to this zoning matter or dialed in?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Phone number ending in six, three, three, one, would you like to speak for this zoning case? Phone number ending in twenty-one oh seven, would you like to speak for the zoning case? Ms. Jackie Slaughter, would you like to speak in favor of the zoning case presented this evening? Ms. Jennifer Pace, would you like to speak in favor of the zoning case this evening? And Ms. Linda S., would you like to speak in favor of the case before us tonight?
Okay, hearing on and seeing on, could you ask if there are any opponents? Are there any opponents here to speak against the zoning matter?
Yes, phone number ending in sixty-three thirty-one, would you like to speak against this zoning case? Twenty-one oh seven, phone number ending in twenty-one oh seven, would you like to speak against the zoning case before us this evening? Ms. Jackie Slaughter, would you like to speak against the zoning case this evening? Ms. Jennifer Pace, would you like to speak against the zoning case this evening? And Ms. Linda S., would you like to speak against the zoning case this evening?
Okay, thank you, hearing on and seeing on, here no opponents or proponents of this zoning matter. The applicant has spoken, commissioners, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for this zoning matter. This is case number two zero two three V as in Victor dash zero zero one dash zero five.
Motion to close a public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Been moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, that will be closed to public here for the zoning matter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say a nay. Hearing on the eyes have it, the motion carries, the public hearing is now closed, staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
The Director of Water and Source. The Director of Water and Sewer here this evening, and she has a presentation. Would you like to hear? Her presentation before or after we sound our recommendation?
Okay, would like to hear the director's presentation. Uh, it is a part of the staff's presentation. And so the director can present, and then the P and uh, the planning and community development staff can follow up with their recommendation to the body.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, you're welcome.
Mr. Giles, if you could stop sharing your screen, please.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Miss Solomon, is that my cue to go ahead and start?
I'm sorry.
Uh, give me one second while I go ahead and share my screen.
Okay.
Okay, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, uh, good evening. I am Melissa Estra Via. I am the Water Resources Director for the City of East Point. Uh, I have a brief presentation. Typically, uh, before um, items are sent over. To the permanent community development department, we do do an internal review for water sewer storm. And any environmental compliance issues or regulations. So we did uh, talk about variances. We know that variances are required to. Intrude on the city buffer as well as the state buffer. Um, this is a picture of uh, twenty eight ten Duke of Gloucester. We know that he found a variance to work. In uh, the city's uh, stream buffer. Uh, the city does have a fifty foot buffer with an additional twenty five foot setback. And um, from the uh, pictorial view that uh, that Mr. Giles said showed you, he included that. His home is actually already located in the city's fifty foot and seventy five foot um, buffer. Um, what I would like to add is the red area is the area in which. He is removing, he is removing six hundred and twenty eight square feet of impervious surface. And he's adding the back of the deck. So it is a net increase of impervious surface in regards to stormwater. Um, or adding anything additional to the city's buffer. Um, this is a photo of the back of his property. We did that that to make sure that we could kind of show you what it looks like. Right now, today. And so the red area is just the state buffer, which he is not working in. And the yellow area is the highlighted area that he wishes to add. Um, in terms of increasing storm and having issues, he does have um, some erosion as well as some high. And water marks that he has here. I want to go back here just to show you here. This stream bank at one point in time um, had a fence line here, and you see it has eroded. The city also does have a sewer line that we repaired most a few times over the years in back of this property. Um, again, we feel that this addition may uh, try to stabilize the area. That he's already um, lost due to erosion of the stream bank. So again, um, since he's removing that section of his current driveway, it's not adding any additional impervious surface. Um, to the city's stream buffer. And so we had uh, did not see any reason for him to push forward. With the variance application with this zoning board. And do you have any questions for me?
Um, no, we we won't have questions until we get staff's recommendation and we have a motion on the item. And if there's a commissioner that has questions, then we'll engage.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you so much for your presentation. Staff, you may continue.
Okay, uh, Chairman and Board, staff's recommendation for this request, and I'll share my screen. Staff's recommendation for this request uh, was forwarded over to everyone as a recommendation for. To deny the applicant's request. Uh, wanted to make mention and known that. This information and this decision was made before the information that you just recently heard from uh, staff regarding the water. Uh, information as presented. Um, with that information in regards to the zoning ordinance. Uh, staff didn't find any supporting details to move with an approval. Uh, we did not have the. Acknowledging information as presented. Uh, so as we stay, as we state to you before you now, that that recommendations for denial. And I believe that this board can consider um, any action based upon the information that staff has presented regarding um, their site visit.
Right, that is correct. So um, these things are just recommendations, just for the benefit of all of those. Who are present this evening. Um, each of the entities here this evening, we have duties which are. All different or separate, but it is all in a part of the zoning and planning process. Staff provides this body with a recommendation. It is simply that. And this body may decide to support that recommendation or may decide to go against that recommendation. Based on the information that we have, and as this is a quasi judicial body, um, the parameters within. Within which we must operate. Staff's recommendation as uh, presented by Mr. McSwain. Is to deny the zoning application. Um, and uh, there was also a presentation by the Director of Water Sewer. Um, which presented that there was a net zero impact. And you can shake your head um. Estrella, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Miss Estrella, so um, so you have, we have both of of those things. So we've heard from the applicant. We've also heard from the Water Sewer Director, and we've also heard the recommendation from staff. Commissioners, at this time, I will entertain a motion.
A question, Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
What is the material of this uh, additions going to be? Is it going to be wood?
Okay.
Is it going to be concrete?
Commissioner Presley, you are entitled to a point of order on that. Uh, I don't think that's a point of order question. We can get to your question once there is a motion. If there is a motion to deny, the reason that we follow Robert Rose's order. Because if it does not have a motion, or if a motion fails, then there is no discussion, so that the meetings are efficient. So if you have a question, um, if you would like to make a motion, um, for comments or questions, then you may do that. But we must have a motion in a second to entertain or engage questions.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we have a period of questions about the. Construct and the construction of this project.
Okay, so is your motion to approve or deny with with for for questions? Because there has to be a motion. Okay, so you have, you're making a motion to approve um, for discussion. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, there's been a motion made um, to recommend a, a motion made to approve. And commissioners may also add that because this is the variance, this body, we are the final arbiters. So your motion does not need to be made in a form of recommendation. Um, and whatever decision is made here to this evening is the binding decision. Because this, we are final arbiters. The motion is to recommend approval and for discussion. Is there a second? Um, I think that was Commissioner Joseph Fields. So there's been a motion to approve um, for discussion made by Commissioner Presley. And a second by Commissioner Joseph Fields. Um, Commissioner Presley, you have the floor for your question.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My only question is about the construction type of. The project, and would it sustain? Or or rather alleviate any further erosion of the property? That's my question.
Okay, to the point of the building materials used, I think that that would be a question of the applicant. I don't think staff would know that uh, at this point. So, Mr. Giles, are you there? You just put yourself on mute.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, did you hear the question?
Yes, he wanted to know the materials being used.
Yes, that is correct.
Yes, it will be uh, a primarily a wooden, a wooden deck, but it will be elevated. Uh, roughly akin to uh, what what a crawl space would be, that concrete pad. That that's notated on the drawing. That's roughly about, and I don't know if uh, Ms. Estriberia could throw a pictures back up, but. That's roughly about maybe three, maybe three and a half feet off the ground. So it would be an elevated wood deck, and it would be roughly about three, three and a half feet off of the ground. So it would be an elevated deck with a three and a half, three foot crawl space.
Commissioner Presley, does that satisfy your question?
Yes, sir. It sounds like there will be no ground disturbance in um. In what he's proposing to.
Okay, I'm not sure. That would then go through um, land disturbance, and when the drawings are submitted, that's the only time we know that. Okay. Commissioner Lovett, you have your hand raised.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question of the applicant. Is there an extension of the existing driveway? Uh, I'm sorry, but I don't recall seeing a driveway on the side. Is there not a driveway on that side of the houses?
It 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 is a dri- I don't know which, where, let me see, if I can able to share my screen. Um, I could show you that where the driveway is located.
I'm sharing my screen. Is is this an appropriate uh, site plan to show for right now?
Uh, yes, it is. You may have to blow it up so she can see the actual. That's an even better one. Um. Yeah, that's a better. You can start right there. You see where it's, it has driveway. It's a driveway slash parking area. And um, yeah, you see where your cursor is, is where where that, that's where where that is.
Commissioner Lovett, you're on mute.
Alright, thank you. So the driveway is not going to be extended to for the.
Oh, no.
Okay.
No, no, I'm not extending any driveway whatsoever.
Okay, alright.
The only thing I'm extending is the actual decking area uh, that's notated on the as. On notate on the drawing, that gray area, but I'm not extending any driveway.
Alright, thank you.
If you could, please lower your hand, Commissioner Lovett. I'd appreciate it. Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, I I've got um, just a couple. I want to go back to the slide. I think Ms. Estriberia had a slide. There is um, because this, I think, is key. And so I'm going to have questions of Ms. Estriberia, then I'll move forward. Can you pull up the slide that depicted the red area of impervious surface that is to go away? Okay, and can you enlarge that, please? Okay. That seems to run alongside the established driveway. What exactly is that impervious surface?
You're asking me the homeowner, Ms. Estriberia?
I was asking Ms. Estriberia because she stated in her presentation, but you did not, Mr. Giles, that that was to go away. Is that correct?
That that is an option if if it, if you guys require me to, as a, as a, to have a sort of a net zero. Uh, gain of of impervious square footage. I'm definitely open to that. That's why I was put there as an option. I prefer not to remove part of my driveway, but if I have to, then I'll do. And that's an option that I'm I'm willing to to do uh, in order to to, for this variance to be approved.
So that that then comes to my point exactly. The planning and community developments recommendation is to deny this. Um, because it is within um, the uh, the buffer, the city's buffer only, not the state buffer. In your presentation, Mr. Giles, you did not mention that as an option. And that is a very important piece of information. Because as Ms. Estriberia pointed out, there are already water lines on your home, correct?
No, I'm not sure what you mean by water lines on the home. I.
Okay, did you see her presentation?
Yeah, I saw her presentation, but I I want to be clear. It's not on my home as in physical residence. It may be on the property. Let's make a distinction between the land. And the actual physical property, the enclosure where I live.
Yes, and.
There's no water, yeah, there's no water marks on the enclosure where I live, the physical structure. But there are water marks, as Ms. Estriberia stated, just by the fence area. Where there are, where there's been some erosion, and the city has already uh, and already taken some action by putting. Uh, riprap, rocks, and things of that nature to retard the erosion. As well as I will entertain i- if 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 need be, add more vegetation, which. Would really be more, what I believe would be more advantageous is to add more vegetation along the bank. Banks, which would solidify and stabilize the banks more so than removing the driveway. There are two alternatives. Uh, I could remove part of my driveway if necessary.
Okay, Mr. Giles, one second, please. Ms. Estriberia, would you please pull up your presentation? I want to make sure that I understood your presentation correctly.
Okay.
And if I have misunderstood, then I want to stand corrected on that. And you're on mute, Ms. Estriberia. Can someone please stop screen sharing so the Ms. Estriberia may screen share?
Do you all still see a screen? I believe I stopped the screen share.
No, we don't see a screen anymore.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Okay, can you go to the slide where what I thought I heard you say is that there were water marks. That had been pointed out. Are you familiar with that part of your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, can you go to that slide, please?
Here.
Yes.
And right there, you can see some um, marks. And I mean, it it's possible with any flooding. Or rain events. And again, when I did my review, um, I didn't look at it from proposed. I was under the impression that he would remove this impervious surface here. At six hundred and twenty eighth uh, square foot and add in the yellow to that net, which is why I would um, you know. Support whatever or recommend rather, that the variance, because he's not adding any additional impervious surface.
Right, so your your professional recommendation as the Director of Water and Sewer is that we. Return to a net zero of impervious surface, and your recommendation is uh, via. The removal of that six hundred and twenty five feet of impervious surface that is currently, I guess. A part of the driveway, but not the whole driveway, and that would still allow the driveway to function as a driveway. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Giles? Mr. Giles?
Yes.
So this is. So this is the slide I was speaking of, so that's what I heard.
Okay.
She was talking about that on your physical structure.
Okay.
Okay, and so what I think is key is that. Um, the recommendation from the Director of Water and Sewer is that there is a net zero. And so for what I think is important, I don't want to further um. As aspirate the situation, because it is within the string buffer, and so I do think that we need to mitigate that. Which is why I wish you had discussed that in your presentation, because then I felt, then I would feel that, okay. He also understands that there are buffers for a reason. In order to achieve what you're trying to achieve in your proposal, if we do X to mitigate this. And bring this to a net zero, then those are things that um that you would be amenable to.
Correct, correct.
All right, so the motion is to approve Commissioners. Um, I think it was made by Commissioner Presley and seconded by Commissioner Joseph Fields. Um, it's to approve, is your rec- is your. Motion to approve Commissioner Presley predicated on the advice or the professional recommendation. From the Director of Water Sewer of um reducing the impervious surface so that there is a net zero game.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Joseph Fields, is your second stand on that?
Yes.
Okay, so then we would need a condition that in order for this to move forward. That the applicant would then have to um based on the um. That area that was marked by the Director of Water and Sewer. Uh, remove that impervious surface to add the additional impervious surface. Is that a condition, um a friendly amendment to your motion, Commissioner Presley?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Joseph Fields, does that still stand as your second?
Well, I had a question regarding the um the three foot height between the um.
We can get to that. There's a, there's, we're, we're working on a friendly amendment, so for for that, and then we can go into that discussion. Would your second still stand for the removal of the addition of the six hundred and twenty five feet of impervious surface?
It still stands, yes.
Okay, and now I recognize you for your question, Commissioner Joseph Fields.
Yeah, I don't think it would make a difference whether there's a net uh gain with uh regarding the removal in addition of the impervious surfaces. Since the deck is gonna be three feet above the ground, and once the water hits the ground, it's gonna roll into the um. Into the stream that we're supposed to on impervious surfaces. So I think that is a net gain. Uh, from that particular aspect of it. So either way, um um. There won't be any damage done based on this particular subject that the way that we're discussing them now. So, but my second stand based on those as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, any other comments, questions, or concerns? The motion on the floor is to recommend, the motion on the floor is to approve. Uh, with the condition that the applicant uh removes the six hundred and twenty five feet. I think that's what it is exactly. Is that correct, um, Ms. Estroveria?
Six hundred and twenty eight square feet.
Six hundred and twenty eight square feet, so portion of the driveway, and for the record, we need for. That red line to be attached to the approval, so that the applicant will know exactly what needs to be approved. And so that the applicant may build the screened in port and the deck addition to his home. Within the East Point um string buffer. Um, that motion is made by Commissioner Presley, seconded by Commissioner Joseph Fields. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. Mr. Giles, your variance request has been approved with the condition.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Our next agenda item is case number two zero two three R's in Robert Z's and Zebra does zero zero two dash zero six. Two four four one Main Street. The variance type, the application type is a rezoning. Staff, would you please sound caption?
Yes, in reference to item number three, case number two zero two three RZ dash zero zero two dash zero six. The applicant is Todd Shoemaker. The property is located at twenty four forty one Main Street. The applicant is requesting to rezon the property from CR Commercial redevelopment. To I one like industrial Tyler King, go back, please, thank you. To establish an automobile repair and training facility. The case type is rezoning.
Okay, thank you so very much. And is our applicant present this evening?
Um, I am present. Uh, my name is uh Larry Witherspoon.
Just, 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 just one second. So you are present. I need to know that first, right?
Yeah.
So Commissioners, at this time, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing for case number. Two zero two three R's in Robert Z's and Zebra does zero zero two dash zero six.
Motion over the podium, here in Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Joseph Field, so we open the public hearing. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have the public hearing is now open. Stat, uh applicant, would you please state your first and last name and your current address and may present your case?
Uh, my name is Larry Witherspoon Junior. I am speaking on the behalf of Todd Shoemaker, the applicant. I am the um Executive Director of the Automotive Training Center and the uh uh which owns the property. At two four four one Main Street. Um, based on our um working meeting last week, I have uh brought a presentation. To uh explain some of the questions that the Commissioners had, and while we understand that the uh CR. Uh zoning does not allow uh for our requests, I would like to um. Uh, place before the Commissioners uh a plan that I think will benefit uh both the city of East Point. And uh dispel some of the concerns uh that the the Commissioners had uh based on our last meeting. Am I able to uh share my screen?
Yes, you are, and I also have the presentation if you would like for me to share it.
Okay, I can share it. Uh, it'll be a little easier if I go through it here. Um, so uh based on our last meeting, I would say there were two issues. Uh, number one is our. Uh, the work that we do, is it gonna be a blight uh to the community? And number two is that this zoning uh does not fit uh the CR redevelopment. So. One second here. Everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, um, so as I said previously, um, our organization name is Automotive Training Center. We've been in existence since uh twenty fourteen, uh and we started our operations in twenty sixteen. We have uniquely filled the niche uh for uh what we call Eris or under-resourced students ages fifteen to twenty five. We have selected that demographic because statistically, they are, uh especially males, are those most likely to commit crimes. And what we want to do is uh really turn that um s- statistic on its head. And really produce um productive citizens uh from that demographic. We see students who come from all walks of life. Um, uh some with uh criminal history, uh some that have been involved in crimes but have not been. Caught by law enforcement, refugees, homeless, uh really any. Type of student who uh would not attend a normal technical college. Um, and here in Atlanta, we um have uh an exhaustible. Uh, role of students who are needing this type of training, we connect them with high functioning. Uh, mostly dealership employment. Um, on the um uh the outer reaches of Metro Atlanta, because they provide the 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 mo- the highest wages. And the best type of training for our students. So here I just have some stock photos that kind of uh give a face to our students. And our uh our training staff here, and these are just some photos of what a normal day looks like. These students are trained on uh customer vehicles primarily, and so as a five oh one C three, we're able to generate revenue. From these repairs, but the the main reason is that. Uh, it is the best training that we have found for students. And this differs from a technical college which may have donated vehicles which do not necessarily have to be roadworthy. They can simulate problems, and then they can be pushed into a back lot. And we, uh me and my co-founder found through our our technical uh school experience that it was not the best way to prepare our students. And our our dealership partners really love that our students have this under the belt, so they understand. If there's a waiting customer, um if if a part is delayed. What it means to get that vehicle done and back to that customer and to make it safe for them. Um, another stock photos, and so this next slide here is what I feel that. Uh, multiple Commissioners asked, is this what our organization looks like um when we set up business? This is the Central Avenue Business District that I'm sure most of you are aware of. And there are several businesses uh down this alley as it leads into Hateville, and this is what's um. Uh, everybody is used to. Also, we're relocated on on uh Silver Road, uh there is one. But as you can see here, there are cars with body damage, and I'm sure at night, I mean, they're open for operations, but most of these cars. Are not moving out. Some of them are probably staff vehicles, um but a lot of vehicles just in to stay. Um, over and over and uh in different states of repair. Uh, some of his work is completed outside. This blue and red building uh services use. Uh, used tires, and so the majority of their space there is consumed by tire storage. And so they cannot complete um their business operations inside of their facility. Which would um uh be better for the aesthetics and um. Um, what we have here is is East Point uh residents and business owners. So what I want to change with that narrative is to show how we do our operations. This is Anthem Automotive. This is one of the best Google rated shops in the city. Uh, it is an independent repair facility that our co-founder worked at for close to three years. Uh, their owner uh used to be one of our board members. It is situated um, you know, um at the very near end of Midtown and Buckhead. And it sits amongst a lot of the luxury dealers, Land Rover, Mercedes Benz, a Buckhead, and. They are full at all times, just because their price point is a little bit less and they provide excellent service. Now, this is just a rendering of of uh their site here, but this is what this business looks like. It is clean, it is professional, and it generates, this is, this is a multimillion dollar business. That operates not too far from us and is what any automotive shop in East Point should look like. It is not a blight on the community. It is nestled in between other retail businesses. High-rise communities, grocery stores is a uh Pasadena Church is right across the street from it. And they are not getting any complaints about the business that they do, and it is servicing the community. This see, this is an actual photo. Um, this is during the day during their business operations, and at night. The only vehicles that are out here are vehicles that are being picked up after hours for customers. Rest of the vehicles are. Uh, inside if they need to stay over for a day, and especially on the weekends. There are very few vehicles that are left over because of their desire to get those vehicles back to their paying customers. And to continue their business operations. So uh Mercedes Benz, a Buckhead, is uh a stone's throw away from this. This is, as I said in our last meeting, one of the most profitable Mercedes Benz dealerships. In North America, not just the US, it is minority owned, and the owners, the Beranco family. Used to own our location at two four four one Main Street. They owned it as a Pontiac dealership in the early seventies. If you see those three garage doors open, I would take any of you, if you would like to visit with me, you can close those doors. It is a terracotta style tile floor. You could put up some curtains and you could have a gala in there. That's how nice it is. Um, uh literally, this is one of the best businesses. If I didn't work. In my current job, I wouldn't want to work there as 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 uh an automotive focused person, because. It is a diverse workforce that is absolutely excellent, excellent, and is a model for how we see our operations. Uh, here at the Automotive Training Center. Here's an actual uh stock uh photo from their daytime operations. And um they are so busy, you cannot see it here, but they actually have a parking garage. Uh, I think it is between four and six stories that they have for uh new vehicle sales. And for uh their repair operations, because they see a need not to expand its uh sprawl. And because where they're located in Buckhead, they had to go up and not out, um but they service um hundreds of vehicles per day. Um, and this last one is Braxton Automotive. Um, the same thing with Mercedes Buckhead is nestled in between um. Um, um. Uh, high-rise communities and other businesses. This is our last partner here, Braxton Automotive, same thing, independent repair shop. This is a daytime photo, and then at night, uh the vehicles are gone. So we are actually gonna be rebranding, um adding jumpstart to our name, and I wanted to show some of the renderings that we have. Um, uh that is going along with our our logo change and our renovation plan to uh the location. At uh Main Street. This is our current facility on Silver Road. I know we looked up. Some of the photos from the outside, um and if you look, if you drove past on Silver Road. Um, going towards Cleveland Avenue or back up to Langford Parkway, you would look and you would see exactly what's loo- looks like on Central Avenue. This is an actual picture that was taken yesterday after we closed. That vehicle right there is one of our employees, our service advisor, and when he leaves, there are no vehicles outside. We have vehicles parked inside, um and this is um. Um, we have all this construction debris that was dropped. Um, illegally from another company, but that is not part of our property. And if you can see all these vehicles in the end there, um this is another tenant that does um uh vehicle recovery, towing. And junk cars. He has um, you know, all of his uh business licenses intact to do that type of operation. But the only vehicle that is here is this Chevy Suburban, which is our shop vehicle, and this is a normal day. Our parking lot is busy, and at the end of the day, all those vehicles are gone. Um, or they are inside for stores, security, and they're in some state of repair so that it can leave the next day. Um, and then this is uh Main Street. This is an older Google photo that kind of shows. Their operations in the front would seem semi-normal, but if you go to the back, you can see that they have scrap tires. Stored outside, um, it looks like um to me that most of these vehicles. Are um probably not leaving at the end of the day. We will have some storage in the back. Um, because the building doesn't have much storage on the inside, uh so we'll have some. Storage containers that we will paint the same style as the building, and those will be closed and secured, but we will not have. Um, RVs that may or may not run, uh tires that are being illegally stored outside. They're not. Based on environmental protection vision, it cannot be stored that way. Um, and it will be locked up and secured. So, um, that is what our hopes are for this property, as we can renovate it, I've said previously. Everything on the building will be touched, roof, doors, paint, um offices will be renovated. The parking lot will be replaced. We've already replaced this portion of the fence, because it was in disrepair. That you can see facing Fairfax Avenue. And then moving on to our rendering here, um we obviously will need to get these, this is our color scheme, but we'll have to get that. Uh, run by the city, um but. Uh run by the city, um but this will be an absolute boon. To the city of East Point as we continue to do um our operations in the city, but it will allow us flexibility to grow. Um it will keep taxpayer dollars in the city, uh as it currently stands. I would not recommend another auto repair facility in the city of East Point, especially with. This ambitious city plan that is um gonna um have more and more individuals move into the city. That are bringing um um you know, that are are middle class or potentially more than that. Uh where are they going to get their vehicles repaired and and how this city plan is um with people moving back into the city, they don't want to commute. They want to potentially be carless, we have the light rail here, we have a bus system, but if they do have a vehicle, where are they going to go to get that repaired? We do offer that um plus the training. Of our students, which is groundbreaking, not just in Atlanta or Georgia, but nationally. Uh to make uh a footprint and have have a headquarters for us. To then grow this operation uh to even more locations. We um we also primarily serve uh minority residents. Um of Atlanta, uh I think I think we're currently at eighty-one percent of our students are. And helping them get a leg up into uh making careers uh for young people. We also understand that we are not smack dab in the middle of the city of East Point, we are in the far. Uh reaches and every other property around us is uh. Light industrial with exception of the building uh immediately adjacent to us does have some housing. So our property does fit in its location, and if we were, as I previously mentioned, the property in Hateville. Which is in downtown Hateville, um I think that that would cause any question. But if the, and I understand the city has spent, uh I'm sure some significant money having the study done. It is possible, and especially in our city, in Midtown and Buckhead. That businesses of our nature, when done well, can exist uh amongst. Other businesses, retail and um housing. Um and that we would not be a blight, but a boon to the city. And we would consider uh this rezoning application with conditions. That we operate as I'm stating here and that we would not harm the city. Um or potentially that uh we move to the light industrial and then the CR designation. Is reinstated and so if we ever move, the city plan can still continue. But while we are in this location that is a shining light, that will be beyond the city of East Point.
Does that conclude your presentation, Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Okay, are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of the zoning matter? Any other proponents here to speak in favor?
Phone number ending in twenty-one oh seven, would you like to speak in favor of the zoning case? Phone number ending in fifty-three ninety-five, would you like to speak in favor of the zoning case?
Phone number ending in one zero zero eight, would you like to speak in favor of the zoning case before us tonight? Ms. Jackie Slaughter, would you like to speak in favor of the zoning case before us tonight? Ms. Janice Redner, would you like to speak in favor of the zoning case center?
Okay, is it all Miss Oliver?
No, I see that Ms. Redner has um unmuted, so I just wanted to wait just a second if she wanted to speak this evening.
Sure.
Okay.
No, I don't have, I don't want to, no.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Pace, would you like to speak in favor of this on application before us this evening? And Ms. Linda S., would you like to speak in favor of the zoning case before us this evening? Mister Chair.
No, okay, um we've heard that there are no other proponents here for this zoning matter, are there any opponents here to speak against? The zoning matter, any opponents here to speak against?
Phone number ending in twenty-one oh seven, would you like to speak against the case this evening? Fifty-three ninety-five, would you like to speak against the zoning case this evening? Ms. Lotta, would you like to speak against the zoning case before us this evening? Ms. Redner, would you like to speak against the zoning case before us this evening?
No.
Ms. Linda, would you like to speak against the case in front of us this evening? Ms. Pace, would you like to speak against the case this evening? As well as the phone number ending in one zero zero eight, would you like to speak against the case this evening? Mister Chair, that concludes all of the attendees this evening.
Okay, thank you. We've heard from the applicant and we also have heard that there are no other proponents to speak in favor of the zoning matter. And none to speak against the zoning matter. Commissioners, at this time, I will entertain a motion. To close the public hearing for case number two zero two three R's and Robert Z is in zebra dash zero two dash zero six. Yes, Commissioner Fan.
Public hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Presley, that we close the public here for the zoning matter, all in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing on the eyes have it, the public hearing is now closed, staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Thank you. Staff's recommendation uh in consideration for this petition. Uh we relied on the text and language used within the comprehensive plan for the city of East Point. And specifically also using the language outlined and used for the architectural uh downtown overlay. District uh ordinance requirements, uh the comprehensive plan as uh outlined in the report that was issued to. The board uh points out that it is reserved for the designation for traditional urban neighborhood. Um and short, the comprehensive plan has reserved this particular area to have residential. Uh with different densities, uh mostly in the high density end for this particular area. I also want to point out in our report and also mention in the overlay. That the CR, Commercial Redevelopment District, was designed and intended specifically for. Uh the architectural downtown overlay and those parcels identified in that mapping area or region. Um with that information um presented, and I have the zoning map for everyone here who needs to see. Such a properties here here in red, with that information collected, staff did um. Recommend that we deny uh the applicant's request. Due to the incompatibility with the future land use map and also for the inco- incompatibility with the um architectural. Downtown overlay as well, I'll be happy to answer any questions if needed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McSt- Mr. McWay. Commissioners, we've heard from the applicant, we've heard staff's recommendation, um this is a rezoning. Um at this time, I'll entertain a motion, the motion should be made in the form of a recommendation.
Mister Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Lovett.
I move that we accept staff's recommendation to deny.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Lovett, seconded by Commissioner Joseph Fields, so this body recommends denial of. Case number uh two zero two three R's and Robert Z is in zebra dash zero zero two dash zero six. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns?
I do have questions, I changed my manual word.
Okay, Commissioner, you recognize?
Oh, thank you so very much, I'm sorry to raise my hand up, I want to, can you go back to the map, please? Can you go back to that map?
Yes, I can. Which map, the current zoning map or the future land use map, which map do you need to see?
Where was uh designated for CR, with the with the red, with the red.
Sure, I'll share my screen.
So, so yeah.
Taylor, I think we may have clicked on them at the same time, but there you go, thank you.
Can you raise it up for me, Taylor? Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, the what where is that that the street that's crossing there? On the right up the upper right hand side, where is that? I know this is mine, what is what is that street?
The Upper Right Harold Seats Parkway, well Freedom Parkway.
Okay, so the there there's a building that's here, that's that's already existing, that's that paint company, whatever it is, and they do exercises in there. What the property is in the back of um this area, and this is a question for us, the UST. It's quite the properties that's in the back, some of that property like in Fairfax and some of that property right there is. Right now, light industrial, has it now been zone CR? Uh so if those, the the if that business, if those businesses go away, then that the new zoning for that property would be CR.
The properties that are located in red are currently zone CR, the ones that are located in gray. Are the light industrial, some of the properties that are there in the current zoning district are legal non-conforming structures and uses.
You say, said it again, uh none, not, said it again.
They are legal non-conforming uses and structures, which means that they were um a they were. In the zoning district before the ordinance was. Yes, basically.
That's correct.
Okay, that's that's what I'm saying, they were grandfathering, uh so so if they move out, then that that grandfather goes away and they become. CR, okay.
Yes.
That's correct.
Alright.
Okay, any other comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, there's a motion to recommend denial for case number. Two zero two three R's and Robert Z is in zero dash zero two dash zero six. The motion is made by Commissioner Lovett, seconded by Commissioner Joseph Fields, all in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing on the eyes have it, this body recommends denial. We'll move to our next case, item number four in the new business is two zero two three U is an umbrella dash zero zero one dash zero seven. The concurrent variance two zero two three V is in Victor C is in Charles dash zero zero one dash zero seven. The address is one four eight six Willingham Drive, this type is a special use permit with the concurrent variant, staff, would you please sound the caption?
Yes, Mister Chair. In reference to item number four. Case number two zero two three U dash zero zero one dash zero seven. As well as case number two zero two three VC dash zero zero one dash zero seven. The applicant is Goldberg's Group Commissary LLC, the property is located at fourteen eighty-six Willingham Drive. The request, the applicant is requesting a special use permit. Within the I one light industrial zoning district to operate a commercial food kitchen and storage business. The case type is special use permit.
Okay, thank you so very much, um commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to open the public here.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Joseph Phil, so we open the public here for this case, all in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing on the eyes have it, the public hearing is now open, uh Mister Pisante, I believe.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
Yes, and if you would state your first and last name and your current address.
Brian Pisanti, I'm located at our corporate office at thirty-one hundred Windy Ridge Parkway, Suite five hundred. Atlanta, Georgia.
Okay, you may present your case.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, uh our application and the materials we originally uh submitted include. Um exhibits A through M and numbered one through eight. On our application for the property that's currently located at fourteen eighty-six Willingham Drive.
Pisante, give me just one second, do you have any visual aids for your presentation?
I do, I'd like to share an overview of a survey with a conceptual plan that shows the footprint and I've got several others to present. May I share my screen?
Perfect, please do. Okay, we can see it.
Okay. Uh our application is to use this particular parcel without changing the structure, the footprint. The parking or anything about the external parts of the building, which is currently zoned I one light industrial. The neighbors, as you can see on the design here, are zoned I one. And I one on the other side of Elm Street and I two heavy industrial on the opposite side of Willingham Drive. The existing structure is just shy of sixteen thousand square feet. It's a two-story building with some offices located on the front side of the building. And uh our intended use, as shown in our application and materials. Is to develop the structure which has been used primarily as a warehouse in the past. As a high-quality commercial food kitchen for food assembly, food production. And then some warehousing of the food products that are built at the factory. Um we have also filed today. And I'll I'll present this in just a minute, but I filed it electronically, a supplemental letter. That provides some additional information and attachments for attachments. That address some questions raised by the staff and by the commissioners. Who participated in last week's working meetings that give further information about our intended use of the property. Uh basically, our proposed special use will not in any meaningful way alter, impact the present footprint. Of the existing building, parking, parking lot or apron, accessways or driveways, or in any way impact traffic flows. Um we had some questions about what the interior might look like conceptually. And we are still working on that, but I do have a document that I can share. Um which is table A to our supplemental letter from today. That shows, uh this is Willingham Drive up here. And Elm Street is to the right of this picture, and this is what the inside of the building will look like. These, in this upper right-hand side, is a two-story office area. The rest of this facility is open to the second floor and these are just single story additions. You can see dry storage, receiving cooler, receiving freezer, shipping cooler, a kitchen area. Um that's the the staff wanted to know what what would the inside look like when we were done with. The next step of our process, which would be to seek approval for a building permit. Um the staff also asked questions about the percentage of the uses among the uh types. And approximately seventy percent of the square footage would be commercial kitchen uses. Approximately twenty percent of that square footage would be warehousing and dry goods. And approximately ten percent would be the office area. We also had some questions about conceptually, how would we handle uh cooking, uh oven cooking of food? Uh we, I described that we would use a similar uh chimney and exhaust system to what we're using in Marietta. I've attached to the supplemental uh some concept drawings, I'm sorry, there that's turned. Sideways, and this shows what the internal hood. Uh air mixing and filtering system would look like over our ovens. To capture and mix with uh clean air, any exhaust air or smoke that's generated by the ovens so that. So that the external exhaust would not have anything significant to the external uh, area. That was a question I think that was posed at the working meeting by Commissioner Fields. The second page of this uh, drawing kind of shows the external exhaust system and hood mixing, this would come out on the roof of the of the structure. There was a a third question which uh, the the chairman posed about consistency of uh, our proposed use with the East Point Comprehensive Development Plan uh, for twenty two twenty three as updated. And we've attached a table to our supplemental filing that talks about opportunities for growth, the redevelopment plan, existing and targeted industries. Um, and opportunities posed to the city to bring in uh, economic development. We think for all of the ten factors that we've listed on Schedule C to our supplemental filing that our proposed use is more consistent with that proposed development plan, including uh, the document which is entitled Willingham Corridor Study, which we did not get unfortunately until this afternoon at one o'clock. Uh, which was a a supporting document for the most recent update, I believe, to the city's comprehensive plan. Um, the chairman also asked about um, whether we could mix a retail use like a a Goldberg's Bagel and Deli in the structure. And unfortunately, we think that the structure is not big enough to fit that use. And uh, with the parking on the front and the curb cuts, uh, make proper use of the facility in that way. But uh, we brainstormed and we came up with a suggestion that we could on intermittent days, for instance, in this example that's shown, uh, have food truck Fridays where the Goldberg's food truck would serve breakfast and breakfast food items uh, one day a week, and we could move our employee parking to the rear of the structure and allow customers to come in and access the food truck, which would would give us some retail exposure for the parcel that might be consistent with the chairman's concerns about about uh, mixed-use development and future use of the Willingham Corridor. Uh, that's that's our concept for how we might a- address that particular uh, item. All of these uh, documents are attached to our supplemental filing, which we filed this afternoon. And uh, we would ask that the the planning commission approve our conditional use uh, permit uh, to operate the commercial kitchen.
Ms. Passante, does that conclude your presentation?
It does.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning matter? Any proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning matter?
Look at my eyes. No more. Look at my eyes. Go tonight, night.
Ms. Render, could you please put your um, device on mute? Staff, would you please mute any uh, attendee who is not staff, an applicant, or a commissioner?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Definitely.
Thank you. And could you please ask if there are any attendees here to speak in favor of this zoning matter?
Yes, are there any proponents here to speak for the zoning case this evening? And the phone number two one zero seven. Phone number ending in fifty three ninety five, would you like to speak in favor of the zoning case here before us this evening? Phone number ending in one zero zero eight, would you like to speak in favor of the zoning case before us this evening? Ms. Lotta, would you like to speak in favor of the zoning case before us this evening? Ms. Renner, would you like to speak in favor of the zoning case before us this evening?
No.
Thank you. Ms. Pace, would you like to speak in favor of the zoning case before us this evening? Ms. Linda S., would you like to speak in favor of the zoning case here before us this evening? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We have no one that would like to speak in favor of the zoning case this evening.
Are there any attendees here to speak against the zoning case?
Phone number ending in twenty one oh seven, would you like to speak in opposition of the zoning case before us? Fifty three ninety five, would you like to speak against the zoning case before us this evening? One is zero zero eight, would you like to speak in opposition of the zoning case before us this evening? Ms. Lotta, would you like to speak against the zoning case before us this evening? Ms. Renner, would you like to speak against the zoning case before us this evening?
No.
Thank you. Ms. Face, would you like to speak against the zoning case before us this evening? And Ms. Linda, would you like to speak against the case before us this evening? Mr. Chair, no attendees would like to speak in favor against this zoning case before us this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Lotta. Commissioners, we've heard from the applicant, and we've also asserted that there are no other proponents or opponents um, for this zoning matter. At this time, I will entertain a motion to close the public here.
Motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Love it, seconded by Commissioner Miller. That we close the public hearing. All in favor, sound aye. All opposed, sound nay. Hearing on the eyes have it, the public here is now closed. Um, staff, would you please send your recommendation?
Will do. Staff, we'll read the recommendation for this request. Um, before doing so, we want to acknowledge just a few points. Um, that has been identified in the staff report for to everyone. One of the items that we would like to identify uh, in regards to this request, we did uh, take notes from the last work session in regards to the questions that staff had as a follow-up with the applicant. Uh, the applicant has worked with staff to address these comments and concerns regarding information within and outside of the building. Um, with further consideration of questions regarding the Willingham Corridor Study, uh, staff did provide footnotes in regards to uh, a few details on that particular study, corridor study. Uh, staff did provide some visuals in regards to uh, the property and the identified area within the corridor study as well, which is the Willingham Drive Corridor. Uh, there is a such a property located adjacent south of this property, which is owned by Marta. Uh, this particular property is designated for uh, a uh, open space park transient. Green corridor project. They call it a pocket green space. Um, this is significant to.
Yes. Second, let me interrupt you. Um, when you're speaking to that and we have this visual, can you do two things for us? One, can you enlarge the visual? It may be larger on your screen than it is on ours. And two, as you're speaking to these things very specifically, can you hover over them with your cursor? So that we will be aware of the area along the study uh, to which you're speaking.
Not a problem. Yes, my my screen was looking a little bit different, so I appreciate that. Um, if you all can see my screen, the subject property in question for the special use and variance application um, is the corner property in Elm Street is here. Willingham Drive is located here. Of course, this is the corner lot. The property in question in regards to the special special interest parcel adjacent south is this triangular piece, which is currently owned by Marta, which is going to be designated or is designated for pocket green space, which is also identified in the Willingham Corridor Study area. And also identified as the Headwaters Park. Um, in consideration, um, with the information provided, uh, staff did wanted to at least provide as much information as possible as footnotes in this report. But in regards to the special use permit, uh, staff's recommendation, we did look at the comprehensive plan. Um, we did follow through and our review criteria points in regards to what is surrounding the property. What is also uh, impacting in terms of use and also environmental impacts of the property as well. And I was kind of slowed down here to kind of show you if there's anything to note. In regards to, excuse me, in regards to the variance request, uh, staff did look at the uh, comments that were brought up in the work session regarding fumes or any possible environmental concerns as that has implementations on the variance requests. Uh, but the special use request would not change the character of the area or impact the adjacent properties or neighboring parcels. We will acknowledge that there are residential parcels that are located or adjacent within three hundred feet of this property. Those are the parcels that are highlighted or colored in green. Those are our one A urban residential. In consideration with the variance and its proximity to the subject property, we understand that the filtration system, those comments that were addressed by the applicant were answered in a way for us to determine to those to not be a detrimental impact on those residential properties. With that information stated, um, you have to excuse me, my mouse is very sensitive. With that information provided, staff did recommend to approve the special use permit. Um, with this compliance with the comprehensive plan and adjacent nearby properties. We also are recommend to approve the requested uh, variance to operate within the five thousand two hundred and eighty-foot uh, restriction for any fabrication. And again, the variance was recommended for approval, given that the use was not a detriment in terms of the type of fabrication and use in regard to any environmental or uh, factors of health for the surrounding adjacent property owners. Staff did recommend to have one condition as part of its approval. And it's to have or include one trash receptacle must be provided and enclosed on three sides with a masonry material. Staff's review over the site plan, we did not see uh, where trash will be going or any kind of trash receptacle on site. Uh, that's why our staff did recommend this one condition as part of that approval. Um, be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Tyler, can you zoom in, please?
Okay, no problem.
We can't see. Thank you.
All right. Is that better?
Yep.
Okay, sorry.
Commissioners, we've heard from the applicant, and we've heard staff's recommendation. At this time, I will entertain a motion. Please make your motion in the form of a recommendation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Joseph Fields.
I recommend that um, we accept the approval as stated by the directive of planning and zoning with the condition of one trash receptacle being provided.
Okay, and just for the records, we could make, so we can perfect your your motion. It is senior planner. Is that correct, Mr. McSwain?
You are correct.
Okay, it's not the director. Director Smith is the director. So your motion is to recommend approval as stated by Senior Director McSwain with the condition as stated by Mr. McSwain as well. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second? Um, Commissioner Love it, are you raising your hand for the second?
Second.
Okay, um, and are there any comments, questions, or concerns?
Mr. Chair, I do have a question.
Sure, you have the floor.
Thank you. And my question has to do with um, the amount of trucks going in and coming out, because this is a service to the planes. Um, uh, so I I'm just wondering, is this going to be an interruption to the community? And how much? And what size trucks?
Yes, okay. And uh, is it is is your question a question for the applicant?
For the applicant, yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Passante, could you please answer those questions?
Surely, that's a good question. Uh, in the second page of our application and in the supplemental letter that uh, we provided, I answered that exact question for the commission to understand. We would be using three to four sixteen-foot box trucks. If you're familiar with the like a Penske rental truck that has dual wheels on the back and regular wheels on the front. Those kind of trucks are the ones that would pick up processed food and that that we made in the facility and deliver it. Uh, and there would be three or four of those that would access those rear docks on the building. Um, in addition, probably one to three times a week, we would get of a tractor-trailer delivery truck of fresh food uh, contents that we would use for the food manufacturing. Um, actually, that this traffic volume is probably less than the previous use, which was a a road construction equipment. And there was a lot of road equipment and trailers and trucks that were stored within and outside the building that came and went. Usually on weekends and at night for for road work. I I I would actually perceive our amount of traffic to be less than that prior use. And don't think it would uh, in any way disturb the adjoining uses.
Commissioner Love it, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioners, any other comments, questions, or concerns? Yes, Commissioner Fan, you're recognized. I believe I saw your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I want to go back to Commissioner Love it's person. Um, where that traffic don't fall off over there from uh, from where you with the loading dock is? What street isn't going in or on?
There's actually two two different gates. There's a gate on Willingham on the front of the building uh, that that drives around to the back. And there's also a large gate on Elm Street behind the uh, concrete apron uh, in that area where vehicles would come and go up to the intersection of Elm and Willingham and then proceed down Willingham.
And and where is it being taken to the airport?
Uh, well, some of the production would definitely go to airport, uh, to airport facilities, to one of the airport gates, depending on the designated uh, recipient. Uh, sometimes it would uh, it would go instead to a production facility and be stored. Um, so it wouldn't necessarily go straight to the airport.
All right. So you got two ways in, uh, two ways out.
Right, there's actually, there's actually a third curb cut entrance, but it's not for truck use. It's on right at the corner of Elm and Willingham. There's a curb cut with an entrance for vehicles, no, up at the up, go further east, up towards Willingham intersection. Uh, with your pointer, there you go. And cars can come in and park in those fifteen spots that are in front of the building. But uh, you know, the small, the smaller box trucks could use that entrance, but a but a trailer-type truck could not.
Can you raise that up for me, please? Let's raise it up for me. I see, uh, I see a curse, but I won't. This is a logic. Okay. Thank you, thank you. So you're saying the backside of Elm Street has another entrance?
Yes, right about where his uh, his uh, pointer is on down here. Just see where the end of the concrete uh, apron ends. There's a large sixteen-foot sliding gate and a curb cut right there.
All right, thank you.
Okay, um, thank you, Commissioner Fan. Uh, Commissioner Fields, Mark Fields, you have the floor. And Commissioner Fan, do you have an? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mark Fields.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just recall from the works um, session that we were, there was some discussion about the possibly having some type of uh, way for the community to come in and purchase your your product. And I understand that that does not fit because of the size. That that does not fit because of the size of the building and what you're trying to do. And then the food truck being the. A possible. Solution to that, but I didn't see that in any of the recommendations. Or conditions, excuse me. And so I was just trying to understand.
Yes, so Commissioner Fields, you are you are correct, and as this body, we can add conditions for our motion. In any way we didn't fit for that, because I have some follow-up on that retail piece as well. And I have some follow-up on some residential items also, and so we can work through those things. You know, but conditions can be added. I mean, the staff made a recommendation. And it is that for us, it is a recommendation. And there is a motion to recommend approval with that one condition. But conditions can be added, they can be edited, they can be subtracted, they can be doing all of those things within this process.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Commissioners, any other comments, questions, or concerns? So I've got a few. Can you zoom out? I know, and we might want to go to. A map, if if Mr. McSwain, that might be good, that because I want to see the extent of the residential. And I know that there's residential along Elm Street. And I would like to also. Make sure that in terms of other residential, that there are no trucks that would go through the residential areas. And that may be that the city would have to post. No truck signs on some of those streets. I do not want the residential community to be impacted by the commercial trucks. Mr. Pasante, you gave us a bit of the information. You stated that there could be three to four of the sixteen-foot box trucks, correct?
Correct. Those would be the vehicles that would principally serve the airport facility.
That is correct, but what we don't know is the frequency of those trucks. And so I don't know if we're able to say that what is being proposed here is less impactful, greater. Or if it would impacted at a greater level than the previous use, because I did not hear frequency.
Right, and we probably will have one and a half ships and be open from five AM to six PM at the start. But the frequency really depends on the number of airlines that we serve out of that facility. I see no reason why our trucks would go back through that residential area when the Willingham corridor is we're right on it. And we can, we can access. The airport in either direction, really. But probably more than likely headed straight towards the gates that are closest to this side of the. Of the facility, come out the front and turn right from Elm onto Willingham. And there'd be no real reason to go any other way. I I would certainly. Say that we would could agree to condition the use not to have our trucks go back through the residential area down Elm Street. And that, because that's perfectly reasonable.
Okay, no, we will determine the 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 text, the copy, the narrative for the condition, because I don't want to single it just to Elm Street. So the condition would be no trucks in in the residential area. It would be trucks along the major thoroughfare. So we would do that part. But it is good to know that you are amenable to that, because that is more than likely going to be a condition that will be added. The other thing is, and Steph, if you can start to just. Craft up these recommendations, because I will then entertain. A friendly amendment to the motion that's on the floor. Now, in your presentation, Mr. Pasante, in in addition to that. There are three to four box trucks, sixteen-foot box trucks. I don't want those to impact the residential communities surrounding Willingham. In any negative way. And then there's going to be one to three. Tractor trailers that will bring fresh food in. Those definitely will be prohibited through the residential areas. Okay?
Understood.
The other thing is, you mentioned that the the square footage of the space is about sixteen thousand square foot. Is that correct? Did I hear that in your presentation?
Yes, the the total square footage of the footprint is sixteen thousand. The office that's in the front of the building that's two-story. When you add that space to the square footage of the rest of the footprint, it 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 might look a little bit bigger. I think the staff's number. The staff's number of square footage includes that second floor office space. Two, so it makes the number look a little bit bigger, seventeen thousand square feet, but the.
Nine hundred ninety.
Yes, sir, yes.
Staff's number is. So my question is this here. For any of the other Goldberg retail locations, what is the average square footage of those delis?
They really vary, because we have some that are on a terminal in the airport and some that are in in like shopping center. Type locations, but they tend to vary from eight to twelve thousand square feet, depending on where they're located.
Eight thousand square feet?
Yep.
Okay, so you've got a spot on the airport that is that covers eight thousand square feet?
No, the airport's much smaller than that. I think the airport square footage is probably like. Four thousand square feet or under. I don't have the number off the top of my head without looking at the lease. But yeah, they vary based on where they're located, how long the store's been there, whether we've renovated them. You know, some of our store locations do catering operations too, so they're bigger than just the retail footprint. So. It's hard to just say we always have them a certain size.
Right, and I would, I mean, I think that that is even at four thousand square feet. That's quite a bit of real estate within the world's busiest passenger airport. But you think that it is about four thousand square feet in Hartsfield-Jackson?
I I don't know the exact number, but it's a small footprint. I've bought food there several times.
Okay, it's a small footprint, right?
Yep.
Okay, four thousand square feet would be rather large, though, if in in large and small is all relative, but if I think of the size of an average home. Maybe along Elm Street, I wouldn't say that those houses are four thousand square feet, would you?
Oh, well. It it depends on what the where your ovens are, where your cooking area is, and where your seating area is. Yes.
Right.
It depends.
Right, yes. So really, my question is this here. I think that if there is a Goldberg, I would be interested in knowing. The number of Goldbergs at Hartsfield-Jackson. The exact square footage, if it's just one, I'll be interested in knowing that square footage. So when I speak of a retail spot in my question and my. My presentation to you for consideration about that. It doesn't necessarily have to be a large sit-down place. It is an opportunity for people in this community to get great fresh foods, right? And so what I'm going to is that we have expended a tremendous amount of time, resources, and talent. To do this whole study along the Willingham corridor that is to bring foot traffic and a family-friendly atmosphere. And all of those things, and the best that Goldberg can come back to us and say in a sixteen thousand footprint square foot building. Is that they can do a food truck perhaps on Fridays. Is that correct?
That that's the idea that we have, because if you look at the number of parking places and the curb cuts we've got extant. Yet there's certain limits to what you can do to make that space work for retail.
Right, I got it. But it could be a place where if we're, if the study. Visions pedestrian activity and walk-up, it could be a small place similar to maybe the square footage of. A Hartsfield-Jackson where people enjoying the Fred River. And the park, the pocket park, where they could walk up for deli foods, and it could have maybe some outdoor seating, a couple of tables on the sidewalk. Those are within the possibility, right?
Well, I I conceptually, I hear what you're saying, but the our management team just didn't think that that would be. Workable for our economic plan for how we would use this facility. And that's why, that's why we came up with the the truck, because we use that for special events. And that would give us a way to address that concern without square footage in the building.
Right, yeah, there was a similar application along Willingham, and it was an issue with some materials being used and their app. Their their applicant or their representative thought that there was just no way that they could use such a material, but for some reason, they got it done. And so I I hear what you're saying, but what I'm saying is. I think that if the city is going to go through this entire exercise to do these studies. To provide areas and to sort of change the aesthetic and the feel and all of those things, and the best that Goldberg can say is that. We might be able to give you a food truck maybe on a Friday. And if in a sixteen thousand square foot building, when a they have a deli at Hartsfield-Jackson. Which I don't think is very large, and I think that they would be able to creatively, I think that there's talent and wherewithal. To figure out how they can accommodate or address a retail component to this. So that they're not just coming into a community, cooking all of this fresh, great food. And the citizens that live around that that don't have to have limited access to those things, won't even have access to it. And but this is the best that Goldberg, their management, you said, is not used to management, right?
That's correct. I'm just there representative.
I think that I I would be very happy if there's a motion to recommend approval, but I think that there's some things that can be worked through. Because I think the citizens of East Point would deserve that. And so I would be very happy for deferral on this to see if we can get with management. And see if we can come up with some idea or solution other than a possible food truck on a Friday. So that the residents who live around there who might be impacted by a tractor-trailer, one to three times a week and. Three to four sixteen-foot box trucks at whatever frequency, how many days those are. But they would really have an opportunity to sort of experience the the freshness and the good food that Goldberg is known for. And so I'm also curious to know the square footage of the Goldberg's Deli at Hartsfield-Jackson. So Commissioners, I would like for the body to consider that, so that we might be able to. Really be consistent with what the William Willingham Quarter Study calls for. And also provide a service to those who are living within that area and and other parts of the city, so that they may have benefit. To all of those great things. Commissioner Mark Fields, you also had a hand raised. Do you still have a question, Commissioner?
No, Mr. Chair, you actually touched on what I wanted to discuss.
Yeah, I I think that. There are just Commissioner Fan, you're recognized.
Commissioner, thank you so much, Commissioner. You 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 have a motion now for the referral. To our next meeting, next month.
Well, I I need a commission, I need. For a commissioner to make that and then for there to be a.
I just, I just made it almost, yeah, I'm telling you, I'm making it now, Mr. Chair.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Field, that this body defers this agenda item to our regularly scheduled September meeting. All in favor, sound aye. All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, we'll defer this item.
Chair, this is Tyler speaking, just to clarify, that's the September twenty-first Planning Commission Meeting.
Yes, I normally, yes. That is correct. Our regularly scheduled meeting, whatever that date is, Mr. McSwain, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So in the meantime, Mr. Pasante, would you be able to convene a. Some type of engagement with management, since I think you've said that they need to make that decision, correct? And with staff so that we can talk through those things and see if we can come up with a solution regarding that.
I'll certainly communicate it.
Okay, thank you so much. I do appreciate that. Commissioners, our next agenda item is two zero two three RZ and Robert Z is in Zebra desk zero zero one with a concurrent variance to. I'm sorry, our next case is two zero two three RZ and Robert Z is in zero dash zero zero one dash zero two with current various two zero two three. Videos and Victor season Charles says zero zero two dash zero seven. The address is three four nine zero and three four eight zero Washington Road. The applicant type is a rezoning. With the concurrent variance staff, would you please sign the caption for this agenda item?
Yes, Mr. Chair, in reference to item number five, case number two zero two three RZ dash zero zero one, dash zero two. And the concurrent variance case number two zero two three B C dash zero zero two. Dash zero seven, the applicant is Neil Bridges, Bridge House Realty. The property is located at thirty four ninety and thirty four eighty Washington Road. The applicant is requesting to subdivide nine residential lots. And rezone from R L Residential Limited to R one, single-family. Dwelling district with a concurrent variance for minimum lot standards on two parcels. The case type is rezoning with concurrent variances.
Okay, thank you. And I'll say this in advance, we're going to open up, I'm going to entertain a motion to open the public hearing in a second, but staff, if you have not done so, I stated this in the work session. If there are specific lots that the applicant is requesting for the frontage for decreasing frontage in terms of those variances. I would like for those things to be clearly identified, because that is what the recommendation will be to identify those lots for to move forward. Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, and we open the public hearing. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now open. Do we have the applicant present?
Yes, I am here.
Okay, do you have visuals for the commission?
Yes, I do. I'll screen share.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Okay, are you guys able to see my screen?
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Oh, state your first and last name, major current address. Thank you, Commissioner Fan.
Yes, sir. Okay, my name is Neil Bridges, and the address. That we our our project is is thirty four ninety Washington Road, as well as thirty four eighty Washington Road. We are proposing a rezoning to of R L to R one. And let me start with just a general location. So this is an aerial. Of the location here is the wooded area that is surrounded by the red outline here. This is off of Washington Road. In between the Herschel Road and Camp Creek Parkway area. There it is the property that is sitting just adjacent to the Dollar General, if you're familiar with that area. This is also, to give you just a quick glance at the street view, so that is the Dollar General there. That is heading towards Camp Creek Parkway, going that way, and Herschel Road going this way. This is the. Wooded area that was just shown in the previous, previous slide there. Starting at our just general, general concept, like you said, we are. This is also a general map, just to give you another positioning of it between Camp Creek and Herschel Road there. Skipping ahead here. This is the the map here. Like I said, rezoning from R L to R one, which would be a lot size of approximately a quarter acre, minimum of ten thousand. Most of our lots will range between ten thousand and thirteen thousand square feet lot size. Our plan is to build nine single-family homes. The living square footage would be at a minimum of eighteen, max around twenty-three hundred. Three-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage at a price point of around two twenty, which is a little. Which is, well, I would say twenty or thirty dollars less than the comparables in the neighborhood or surrounding, probably within a mile. We envision it being inhabited by home buyers, not renters. That being retirees and starter families with kids, age range thirty to seventy-five. This is just a quick look at our general survey, kind of giving you an idea of the topography. This is a shows you the general neighborhood, which is the Carriage Colony neighborhood. We are that particular. We are that particular rounded circle that is at the top. And this is just to demonstrate uh, the different zoning classifications that are in the immediate area. There's a commercial which is next to us, which is obviously the uh, Dollar General. You have um, R L, which is across the street, and then on our side of Washington Road, the um, the remainder of that uh, neighborhood is all R one. So we are just requesting a re- uh, rezon to the typical, to the standard of that particular neighborhood. Our, our impact, we see it as increasing, sorry, we'll be increasing the lot count by seven. There, like I said, we are um, dealing with two lots currently, so we will be uh, in effect combining and then subdividing into um, increase by seven lots. That is an uh, increase of less than five percent to, to that particular community or neighborhood. Uh, we're also requesting that variance of a redu- reduction of the frontage of the property, not the actual front, frontage line. So we would also be um, be consistent with the R one. Uh, all setbacks, we'll be meeting all those, if not exceeding them, but we are requesting a reduction of the lot frontage from the, from what would be the R uh, standard of seventy five to fifty feet. And that would be requested for lots two through six. Um, there were some concerns on the previous uh, panel. And you know, we have addressed those and they were pretty much, most of them were already part of our plan, which was to maintain a natural tree line buffer between, let me go back to the slide here, to to maintain a tree line border as well as a fixed border on the Washington Road and Charles Drive side, which like I said, that was already part of our plan. Um, the other items were the being in keeping with the neighborhood aesthetic, which um, the building material aesthetic, so that was definitely also part of our plan, which was uh, brick, uh, wood siding, things of that nature, no vinyl siding, which was something that um, in a couple of the community meetings was definitely a concern and that was definitely not part of our plan. Uh, one of the other things was the mailboxes, we definitely intended to have individual mailboxes. And again, like I said, matching the materials, as well as one of the other things that was called out was the sidewalks, which was also something that we expected as part of our um, part of the requirement, is definitely part of our plan. This is a look at the, let me just zone that in for you guys. Uh, sorry about that, previously I didn't know I was, wasn't zoomed in. Uh, this is a lot demonstration of what we are proposing. Uh, the lot one, obviously swinging around, the various uh, requests is for lots two through six. We don't envision needing that for all of them, but we are requesting that um, the lots one, seven, eight and nine uh, will not require any sort of uh, frontage reduction. The other lot that is being created is one specifically for water retention, which is also required uh, per the subdividing of this lot into more than three lots. So we are definitely um, uh, providing for adequate uh, space and square footage there to accomplish that. Moving along, this is just a quick view of what we envision the neighborhood to look like, a quick rendering. Uh, like I said, privacy gates, uh, privacy fences, uh, drive, two car garages, one to two stories. Uh, quick look at the, quick look at one of the individual homes. Quick look at kind of what we envision most of the floor plans to look like, two to three bedrooms, kind of open concept, two car garages, rear porch uh, as well on those, front and rear porch on most of them. An idea of just what the interiors would look like here, um, you know, hardwood floors, solid uh, surface um, countertops, um, you know, a, a lot of windows, open concept, like I said. Uh, nine, nine foot uh, nine foot ceilings, open concept. Um, so we, yeah, thinking that we're going to have a really good project here, um, a really nice product as well. Uh, something that would definitely benefit the neighborhood. Next slide is just some kind of comps, comparisons of the price points and things that are happening in the immediate area. Um, these are, that's also some comps showing you kind of what the um, comps are looking like in East Point, uh, what the new constructions are looking like, so this is kind of to give you an example of what's kind of going on, the fabric of what's happening uh, new construction wise in the area, in the immediate area. Um, these are just some of our uh, builder partners, as, as, as well as our uh, design team, which you can definitely look up and we can provide further information on them as well. I believe Commissioner, you requested on the last meeting that um, some pictures of the um, companies that we will be using, and these are some of those addresses. I can also uh, provide that um, by email, so you guys can look further into that if you like. These are some of the projects and some addresses. Uh, this is another one, this kind of shows the interior of one of the homes. As well as a continued uh, effort to show the con- uh, interiors of the buildings that they have done, of the homes that they've done. There was also a concern about the uh, cul-de-sac, so this is just to address the frontage issue. So this is two of the uh, cul-de-sacs that are currently in the neighborhood. This is one that is on Carriage Way and the other one that is on uh, Carroll Court, I believe that is. So this is just showing that we are um, our cul-de-sac will be in fitting with the fabric of the neighborhood. Um, you see the different uh, frontages here kind of listed, so that gives you an idea of what is uh, the current condition of the neighborhood. And that pretty much concludes my presentation for you guys, if you guys had any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Are there any proponents here to speak in favor of this agenda item, any proponents?
Phone number ending in twenty one oh seven, would you like to speak in favor of the zoning case before you this evening? Phone number ending in fifty three ninety five, would you like to speak in favor of the zoning case before us this evening? Phone number ending in a one zero zero eight, would you like to speak in favor of the zoning case here this evening?
I, I would like to speak in favor of the project.
Yes, sir.
Would you please state your first and last name and the floor is yours?
My name is Keith Patterson.
Okay, Mr. Patterson, go ahead, please.
Good evening, everyone. Um, yes, I would like to speak in favor of this project. I do believe that this is a uh, needed development in the city of East Point.
Mr. Patterson.
Yes, sir.
One second, did you state your address?
Oh, I apologize, I apologize, Keith Patterson, and my address is uh, thirty four eighty Washington Road.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, yes, I would like to speak in favor of the project. I do believe that this project is a needed development in the uh, city of and it speaks to not only what is going on in the neighborhood, but it deals with the trend and the uh, crisis of a housing shortage that we now have in the greater Atlanta metropolitan area. And I think that these nine homes would um, uh, not only be a uh, addition to what is already a great neighborhood in Carriage Colony, but in addition to East Point as well to um, to help assist in the, in, in that effort of uh, satisfying uh, a housing shortage and then people moving to the city of uh, East Point and Atlanta as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
I apologize, sir. I did want to add that I do think that, or I know that we have given careful consideration to what is going on in the Carriage Colony community and the aesthetic of the homes will be in uh, there, and you know, just to, to beautify that entry point of that community, if you're coming from the Camp Creek side of things.
Okay, um, and Mr. Patterson, you said your address is thirty four eighty Washington Road?
Thirty four eighty Washington Road, thirty four ninety Washington Road.
Okay, and so when you, okay, I'm sorry. So when you said we, I thought that you actually lived in the community currently, those are the addresses of the application, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so those are not your addresses, is that right? So when you're So it's confusing, so when you say we have given consideration, it almost sounded when you gave that address of Washington Road, that you were a resident in that area, but you're not, is that correct?
That is correct, I'm sorry if I, if I'm spoke, misspoke, but no, I'm not of that community.
Okay, can you give us a, your address, Mr. Patterson?
Yes, sir, my address is four twenty one East Green Street, Monticello, Georgia.
Okay, four twenty one East Green Street, thank you. The reason that this is, this is for all in attendance. It is just not something that is frivolous, that is put in our rules for public hearings. These transcripts are recorded by a court reporter for an official document of the meeting. In any instance that a request has been made to pull a transcript, it is the way that a speaker is identified. So if you're giving us an address and it is not your address, then it is difficult to affirmally identify the speaker. I hope that I'm clear on that. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of the zoning matter? Any other proponents, all right? Hearing none, seeing none, are there any opponents here to speak in favor of the zoning matter? And, and oppose against the zoning matter, any opponents?
Phone number ending in fifty three ninety five, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would like to speak against it. My name is Etrinda Castle. I am a resident, my address is three six six seven, comma circle, and um,
Just one second, just, just one second. Um, I'm having just a little difficulty hearing you, and again, the, the, the calls are, we transcript them. Can you please state your first and last name and your address once more, just so that we have it for the record?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, my name is Etrinda Castle. My address is three six six seven, comma circle.
City and state?
Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three four four.
Okay, thank you, go ahead, Ms. Castle, you have the floor.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, so I oppose this development. The uh, the considering the numbers of homes that's being proposed for this development, it does not fit with the eh, uh, aesthetics of this uh, community. That's going to be too many homes sitting at the interest of our community, which is going to impose a lot of life uh, changing uh, as far as for our emergency, our, our EMS services, uh, but from what the kids going to and from school. It's going to be a more, it's going to be an influx of more uh, residents, more families, more bodies. It's going to uh, create um, a buildup leaving out of the uh, the community, going to Washington Road, coming into uh, the neighborhood. So we have a lot of concerns considering the number of homes that's being proposed. And if you would look right here on the corner of um, Herschel Road, Herschel and Washington, again, they recently had a fire, I want to say about two years ago, because the number of homes that sit in that little proximity and how close they're sitting, when one home caught fire, the home next door to it also uh, obtained severe damage because of the close proximity of the home. And um, speaking in reference to a short of housing, since problem is not the shortage of housing within the city of Atlanta, the problem is the affordability of the housing. It has nothing to do with the shortage of housing, it's the affordability of houses. So I am definitely opposed, because um, that de- this development, with that number of homes, will create a great impact on uh, just the whole livelihood of everything that goes on, once you have to come in the neighborhood from off of Washington Road. We're already dealing with a buildup on Washington Road, trying to turn into uh, the subdivision. Nine homes, which may embody, let's say, at least uh, a husband, a wife and maybe two to three children. That number just brings in more complications of the entry and the exit. And also, like I said, the nine one one, the community, it just impose a whole lot that need to really take into consideration, when you talk about the number of homes that's being projected with this uh, redevelopment. Thank you.
You're welcome, Ms. Castle. Are there any other opponents here to speak against the zoning matter? Any other opponents here to speak against the zoning matter?
I do.
Okay, would you please state your first and last name and your current address?
Jacqueline Salada Given, I live at thirty six fifty two, comma circle. That property is sold right now, R three L. It was zone R three L for a reason, because of the traffic, cars getting in and out. And we would like to leave it at that, we don't have any objection to the houses, but that many houses is too much. So we need be able to keep it at that, if they want to build the houses, let them build the houses. But it also have a creek down there which causes floods on down at the bottom of Carriage and Charles Drive. Because it's a creek there on the lip, running from the park at right, the south of us, west of us, right across the back of the homes, so we don't need that many houses. Plus, this is a neighborhood where between two and six in the afternoon, you can't get in and out of that subdivision. And it's only two ways out, Charles Drive or Carriage Way, and they are about two car, house mess apart. So we need to leave it at R three L, please.
Thank you, Ms. Lauda Givens. Are there any other opponents here to speak against the zoning matter? Any other opponents to speak against?
Yes, this is Janice Render. I live at three six five seven, comma circle. And my reasons are the co- the number of houses in, in, in the space of the acreage that they, they have is less than three acres of land, that they all got, that they are proposing to use, put nine houses on. Uh, also, I'm looking at the emergency vehicles. I'm looking at the side, the street, it's a small street going from Carriage, I mean, from Charles to Ben Hill. It's the small street, and when, when you look at it, unless they're going to widen the street, and I don't see how they can for emergency vehicles. Fire truck is more than one is going to come, ambulance sometimes, you never know. But that is my reason for uh, opposing the rezoning, the, the number of houses on that less than three acres of land.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Render. Are there any other opponents here to speak against the zoning matter? Any other opponents here to speak against the zoning matter? Okay, staff, hearing none and seeing none, um, the public hearing allows for the applicant the balance of its time to respond to any of the concerns from the opponents. And for the record, I will go back and I will state this, I have learned via chat that Mr. Patterson is actually a part of the development team of the applicants, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the reason that that is important is because Mr. Patterson's comments will then be combined with Mr. Bridges, because Mr. Patterson is a part of the applicant, and so then that determines the balance of time. So that's another reason I was trying to get to the address for the speaker, because uh, those things are all factors and we will abide by the rules of the public hearing. But Mr. Bridges, you have um, some time to rebut any of the concerns that were brought up by the applicants, up to the balance of your time. Staff, can you state how much time is remaining for the applicant?
There's five minutes remaining.
Okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll address them. Uh, I was just gonna reshare, uh, you know, one second. Uh, well, let me just start off by saying, you know, we don't take the neighborhood's concerns lightly. But I think um, based on the, based on the um, City of East Point's um, understanding and examination of our proposal, you know, every, every point that was raised actually has been addressed in the findings from the city, in the, in their evaluation. Let me, let me state it correctly, in their evaluation. Um, the, the traffic, the water, the emergency services, all of those things are addressed uh, at, at minimum by just the code standard. Uh, street width minimums, turnaround radiuses, and things of that nature, which our project will definitely uh, be consistent with, if not exceed those uh, those minimums. The other mention of the lake, um, there is a, I, I wouldn't consider it a lake. I'm not sure if it's actually called a lake, but yes, there is a water source that is more than twelve hundred, uh, twelve hundred feet away from our site. Um, those particular conditions, as well as the neighborhood as a whole, are um, protected by, again, the code, which requires us when we subdivide into more than three lots to uh, have a, a detention pond, which would address any water runoff issues that would be created by the development. So just as an answer to uh, those particular questions that the uh, opponents raised, that is my answer to those. I can, I can demonstrate those if you like, but um, that is my answer to that, um, as well as, like I said, the evaluation uh, by the city in and of itself. Um, in its findings relative to what was mentioned being the, the emergency services, the access, the traffic flow. All of those things were evaluated by the city, and the city did approve and, and did state per the document that we actually received today by Mr. uh, uh, Mr. Tyler, that the city did not see that it would have a negative impact on the neighborhood. Um, and to address the last thing, the traffic, uh, we have been over to the site, I, I don't know how many times at this point. And there, it's been in a lot of different times of the day, so let me just state it in that, in that fashion. And I think anyone, you know, who lives, you know, within twenty minutes of downtown Atlanta, well, let's just stretch it to even thirty minutes of downtown Atlanta, knows that at a certain part of the day, there's traffic for people just coming and going. Um, and that's just the nature of the beast in terms of ni- living near a major metropolitan city such as Atlanta. Um, that condition exists in a lot of different neighborhoods. And, but like I said, I have been to this area several times, and it was definitely a consideration of ours. Um, and most of the times I'm over there, it looks like what I will show you on this particular uh, screen share real quick, just to keep it brief. And I can finish up. But this is the usual condition of more times of the day. Now, yes, during, during uh, traffic time, which is similar in a lot of areas, you definitely will have some traffic. But it is not all times of the day, and it is definitely not from two to six. And I, because I've been over there a lot of times between the hours of two to six, and this is usually what it looks like. But of course, again, like I said, I'm not discounting the fact that there is a, a, a traffic time of the day where it, it is a, a bit of traffic on Washington Road. And I'll, I'll finish with that.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges.
Thank you all.
Okay. Commissioners at this time are entertaining motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Fan, I believe.
Yes, sir.
That we close the public hearing for this agenda item. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing and the public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Will do. Staff's recommendation for this request for the rezoning and the variance uh, took in consideration what, what the comprehensive plan for the City of East Point allows for the area. And also in conjunction of what is already zoned in the area. Uh, the subject property uh, being rezoned to R one uh, would be compatible, given that there is already existing adjacent properties already zoned. R one, um, with consideration of the street formation and layout as seen or before you. I'm sharing my screen if you all can see. Uh, the code of set is common practice does present some um, shape issues with some lots, given that the shape and access that code sets usually have for development, residential and commercial. Um, wanted to mention that again, for the record, that the variance request uh, for this petition was for lots two through six, as mentioned by the applicant. Um, and also wanted to mention as a note for the board and the public in regards to the site information and cross-department review from the other departments. Uh, staff only receive comments from the Water, Sewer and Water Authority. Additional requirements and review items will come before, uh, during a site development or land disturbance review. Um, there were no comments from Public Works in regards to this. So additional details will follow um, after rezoning through a site development process. Um, moving along to the actual recommendation for uh, these petitions. Bear with me. Uh, with the information considered and the analysis and the report, staff will make a recommendation for approval with conditions uh, for the proposed rezoning from uh, Residential Limited to R one, single family. And we will also recommend approval of the variance for the mentioned lots two through six. There are proposed conditions tied to this request. Uh, I will read those conditions for uh, the record. Uh, one, the architectural facades and sightings must match the materials of the neighboring residential homes. Number two, a detailed tree and landscaping plan shall be submitted for the approval by the planning and zoning division or assigned arborist. Number three, sidewalks are to be provided fronting all buildable lots. Number four, uh, must provide a decorative fence to be placed within the designated buffer to enhance screening on all lots adjacent to Washington Road and Charles Drive. And four, a postal agreement must be identified on all submitted construction plans indicating agreement with the individual mailboxes provided for the homes. Uh, those are the five proposed uh, conditions with the recommendation from staff. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have for me at this time.
Commissioners, um, you've heard from the applicant, you've heard from the community, and you've heard staff's recommendation. Commissioner Love, you have your hand raised. I assume that you have a motion. You are mute, Commissioner Love.
I move that we um, accept staff's recommendation. Does this allow for questions?
We have to have a motion in a second, and then we can go into questions.
Thank you. I move that we accept staff's recommendation.
Okay. Commissioner Love's motion is to recommend approval with the conditions as stated by staff um, for the rezoning and approval for the various requests as presented by staff. Is that correct, Commissioner Love?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second, commissioners?
Okay.
It's been moved by Commissioner Love, it's seconded by Commissioner Miller. Uh, now, at this point, we can entertain questions. And Commissioner Love, I am assuming that you have questions. Is that correct?
I do have a question. Is there a, a visual to show the, the pond or the creek or the body of water as it relates to the property that is being developed?
Yes, it is. I can show that in one second.
You could go ahead and present.
All right. Are you all seeing my screen?
Yes.
Okay, this is the subject property, the blue outlined area. And the um, the water source here is kind of faint. You can see it down here at the end of the red line. That's kind of where it starts. And that is a um, a measurement of how far it is. That's using Fulton County's website. It's showing it at being about twelve hundred, uh, twelve hundred feet.
Okay, Commissioner Love, did I answer your question?
No, well, I have another one. So the water source is already surrounded by existing homes. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Mark Fields, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just two quick questions. So uh, my first question is, so R L, Residential Limited, it's already zoned for that, and maybe staff can explain how, if all of the other properties around are R one, how was that piece of property zoned R L or why? And then secondly, what could go on that property if it were not rezoned and it was R L still?
Yes, I'll answer that. Commissioner Fields, all of the properties near it is, are also residential limited. Um, and I'll begin to share my screen in one moment. And then I'll go over the um, permitted uses for the R L zoning district. Give me one second to upload my screen. All right, so this property here, the subject property thirty-four eighty and thirty-four ninety, all of the properties onto frontage of Washington Road are R L. And the ones behind it are, excuse me, are R one. And in the R L zoning district, we have a list of permitted uses. And you, are you all able to see me in a code at the moment?
We're not.
No.
All right, are you able to see them now?
Yes, we can see it.
Yes. So these are the permitted uses in section ten dash twenty-sixty-three, R L Residential Limited, single-family dwelling district. And below are the development standards of the property as well.
Okay. Commissioner Mark Fields, is your question, and this is me asking because I'm not sure, but I want to make sure we get your question answered properly. Is your question more specifically, given the size of the, the subject property in the application, how many homes can currently be built there under the R L zoning classification? Is that more question?
That, that is, that is more directly than my question. Yes.
Mr. Chair. Steph, are you able to answer that?
I am able to answer that if uh, you allow me to share my screen again. Um, I understand the question of being, um, what can be done as currently zoned under the current residential zoning district as, as comparison to what is being proposed as a zoning change. Um, in the staff report that we have provided for everyone, uh, I did get very detailed, and let me know if you can see my screen. We did get very good. We did get very detailed in regards to the comparison of a lot being built under the R L versus a lot being built under the R one. Um, there are minimum development standards of told, and in regards to the total square footage of the lot, that's more of a eighteen thousand in uh, R L versus a ten thousand versus a R one as a minimum. Um, so in this statement that we provided, it kind of gives a little bit details of the comparisons of size. Um, and with the variance in question, um, the code of set has tried to alter uh, the way that the lots are configured and the way that they're putting these homes uh, that fits under the R one standard. But if they were to do a subdivision under uh, the current zoning, that plant will more than likely to, it would definitely look different um, based upon what you're seeing in terms of the minimum requirement for lot sizes. And also the heat of square footage information was provided there as well, if you need it.
Okay, so I just want to go back to that. Um, and I, I, I see what you have given us here in terms of the, the minimum construction lot of ten thousand versus eighteen thousand square feet and the size of the properties for um, conditioned air dwelling units. I don't know if that still answers the question. So even with that, Mr. McSwain, the proposal that the applicant has provided is for ten lots, nine of which would be buildable for homes, one for stormwater retention, correct?
That's correct.
That's with the proposed zoning change. In R L, how many lots could there be under that? And so that would then dictate the number of houses, which is, I think, what we're trying to get to.
Yeah, I'll definitely run that calculation real quick. And I can, what, I think what's being asked is the developable units per acre, the ratio. Uh, I can put some numbers in real quick and get back to you, and I'm doing that actually right now.
Okay. And while you're doing that, I want to recognize Commissioner Fan.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and uh, thank you, Commissioner Fields, for asking that question. That was gonna be a question that I was gonna add. I, I do have another question that I want to ask. Uh, there's a consistent, uh, two things, rezoning and variance, right? So we have to approve the variances on us, right, Mr. Chair? We approve the variance. Uh, we recommend the rezon.
Well, no, because it's a concurrent variance. So concurrent variances are, they're coupled with the rezoning, and they move forward with the request of the rezoning to mayor and council.
Okay, so mayor and council will, will, will approve the variance and, and the rezoning.
Yes, because it's a concurrent variance.
All right, and I just want to be clear for the people who are listening, so they'll understand. Because, you know, we've been talking about, we do variances and we, you know, and it stay with us, but we, we approve it, so people need to understand. In this case, it does stay with us. It goes on the mayor and council if, if we recommend it. My, my other question is, is, and I think Commissioner Fields is on it, uh, when he talks about the lot size, why was it um, R one limited in the first place? Uh, someone had to have rationale to make that property R one in the first place. So I think he's on it. Uh, that's the right question to ask. And um, as, as Mr. Swain is looking at how many houses can be placed if, if it's R one, and then would a variance be needed then for that amount of houses that would go into that lot space? Okay, that's, 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 that's my comment. That's not a question, that's comment. Okay? So I'm done. I need you now.
Okay, thank you. If you would please lower your hand. Um, I am going to recognize Commissioner Mark Fields. And before you speak, Commissioner Fields, Mr. Bridges, I am not ignoring you. I am not recognizing you because the public hearing is closed. And so the opportunity for those in the audience to speak would be during the public hearing time. And the reason that that is important is because if I recognize you to speak, then I have to recognize all the opponents to speak as well. That is why there's a public hearing. If a commissioner has a direct question- If a commissioner has a direct question of you, that commissioner may engage you. But at this time, you're not allowed to raise hand and be uh, recognized to speak, okay? I'm going to go to Commissioner Fields, Mark Fields, and then I'll hear from Ms. Solomon.
Thank you, and I think I believe, thank you, Mr. Chair, I believe I saw in the chat that Ms. Solomon. Uh, indicated that there would be six houses that would be permitted to be built it at current R L. And so then really my question is for um, our staff again, and Mr. McSwain, maybe you can help me with this. So if indeed that they wanted to build those six houses in on the current. Uh, zoning that is right there with no variances, there's really not a whole bunch that would need to happen. Um, except for because they are already in, within the footprint of the neighborhood, they're already. Building and they're not asking for variances, so they, there's not a lot for us to discuss on that if I'm understanding. What it is, and I also would just note that out of ten lots, you're asking for. Half of your lots to have a variance of some sort. On the frontage. Lots two through six. Correct. Or, yeah.
Okay, i- if I can, I can address that, and I do know that we also have, uh, Taylor has her hand up, so she'll probably answer it up behind me. With consideration of that detention pond, that is correct, we're looking at possibly five to six. Uh, units per acre rather than the uh, nine out of the billable ten lots that you're seeing with the proposed rezoning. Um, that's that's really depending on some other factors in regards to how they configure those things and what. How much impact does that cul-de-sac in the design have on the current zoning district? And that that's this information that we don't have at this moment, but this is just speculated numbers based upon calculations of. What's the minimum, the minimum lot size requirement for that current zoning district? And I believe Taylor uh, had her hand up as well, but I I, in my comment.
Mr. Chair, am I recognized?
Yes, you are recognized, Miss Solomon.
Thank you. I do want to say that I did the calculations and um, looked at the comprehensive plan as well. The comprehensive plan for the future development of suburban neighborhood does say that it's four units per acre. That is the density of the project, the property based on the comprehensive plan. The property is um, combined two point eight three acres. And with the calculations of the development standards of the R L zoning district. Of eighteen thousand square feet per property, there will be six units per property.
Okay, um, the comprehensive development plan, let me just make sure I get this correct. The comprehensive development plan. Um, calls for four units per acre, correct? So I hear you say that.
Yes.
And combined, all of these lots is two point eight three, correct?
Yes.
So then that would be eight or nine units?
Yes, my math was off just a little. It will be.
Okay, so two point nine one, and so then that would be how many units? So. Two point nine one. Times four, so that's eleven point six four units. What is being proposed is less than that, correct?
Yes.
So the comprehensive development plan calls for a unit number that is greater than what the applicant is proposing, correct?
Yes, but that does also propose for the other zoning districts that are recognized in suburban residential.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding. All right, got it, okay? Um, commissioners, any other questions? Uh, Commissioner Fane, you're recognized. Ms. Solomon, could you please lower your hand?
I I just want to, I just want to make sure that we're talking about, when you're talking about level houses, are you talking about eleven houses on the residential limited? Or yeah, I know you're talking about the comprehensive land use plan, but we're talking about what the what is zone is right now, residential limited. How many houses can be placed on that lot on residential limited? Is it, you saying this, it can be eleven houses now on the residential limit? That's what you're telling them?
No.
The question, the question was, how many houses can be placed on there on the residential limit? That was a specific question. That was a specific question that I had. How many houses can be placed on there on the residential limit? Now, you guys need to give us that number because that number will help us to make, will help me want to make the decision I'm gonna make in terms of what's allowed me affordable against it. So I need to, I need to know where that number is. I need to know. I'm sure some other commission would like to know too. Uh, because Commissioner Field, I mean, the field's asked, asked the question in the first place. I just want to make sure we get the number. Of how many houses can be built under the present existing zoning without a variance.
And I'll let staff answer that. I think that staff said it was six to that question.
Yes, sir, it is six.
Yes, they did say that it was six, Commissioner Fane.
Because we don't went from six, from not ten, from nine to six, back to eleven. I just want to make sure it's six. So we're clear, it's six houses can build that.
Yeah, and and if I could.
Under the present zoning, yeah.
Yes, and if I may just summarize. The applicant is making a request for ten lots, nine of which will be buildable. The current zoning would allow for six lots. The comprehensive development plan would allow for eleven. Or would call for eleven. Is that correct, Ms. Solomon?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so the applicant is requesting nine buildable, the current zoning would allow six. And the comprehensive development plan calls for eleven.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make sure that those things are clear. All right, any other comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, um, I have a question of uh, Mr. Bridges. So the various or the delta, if you will, between what you're requesting, you're requesting ten lots to build on nine. Currently, there is um, a a zoning in place that would allow for six. Which then would probably mean that there would be no variance needed because there are fewer houses and the frontage. Would probably meet the requirements within um, those six lots. So between the ten lots that you're requesting. And the six that are currently built, there's a delta of four lots.
Yes, sir.
And so I want to make sure that um, we understand, I do hear the concerns of the community. And uh, one of the things that I always try to be in this capacity is I understand that the city has to grow. Um, but we must increase our tax base and all of those things. The property is already zoned for residential. So right now somebody can go in and build house. So if someone comes and says, I don't want anything built there. Which is not what the community said, but I just always think that that could be a bridge too far because. It's land, it's zoned for something, something can be developed there if um, the topography is correct and it's not in the floodplain and all of those things. Would your, with a delta of four, would your. Business model work if that was split so that. It would be a compromise to give two, and so instead of having ten lots. We're talking about eight lots. Under a rezoning. And so then that would be fewer, just a bit fewer, but it would be um, under the um, the current proposal. And it's then. So it's less than what you're requesting and it's slightly more than the R L. And could um, address some of the concerns.
Yes, if you'll allow me to share one last time uh, to demonstrate, um, hang on one second. Okay, so here was an alternate draft of, uh, hang on. Okay, here was an alternate draft, right, of the of the project at its current zoning R L. And that would allow for this sort of configuration, which would require us to. To uh, provide two more curb cuts on Washington Road. Because again, there is one, uh, there's one existing curb cut already, which is thirty-four eighty. And then two curb cuts off of Charles Drive and then one off of Ben Hill. So that would, that would comprise, that would get us to that six. Six um, lots as per uh, Taylor and Tyler saying for that current zoning. Uh, with that seventh lot being for the uh, water retention. Now, we don't have a problem doing this configuration. Obviously, it meets the current zoning. Um, but it would create curb cuts on Washington Road. Um, we thought it better. Being a cul-de-sac sort of configuration that, and we just thought that would be a better fit. Um, uh, better fit as well as, you know, those properties not coming off or fronting a Dollar General, right? So that was the reason for the configuration as you guys have been presented. Um, the other concern with the cul-de-sac and and I agree with your your delta. Your delta change and the um, the understanding behind it. But the biggest part of the um, the biggest part of the subdividing. Of the lot of anything more than three and uh, Taylor and and Tyler can uh, confirm this. Um, that that requires, that then is going to require the detention pond as well as um, access. To those properties, so that then it creates a burden on the property in terms of just the the land development portion. So that was the reason why we were trying to get a couple of more lots to make up for that particular cost.
Okay, state that because I I do not advocate more curb cuts on Washington Road for the development. So um, I do not want to see that because that contributes to the traffic concerns. And I'm also in that area quite a bit, contributes to the traffic concerns as stated by some of the members of the community who spoke on the opposing side. So I do not want any more curb cuts um, on Washington Road. So again, so that I can follow you here. With the cul-de-sac configuration, and I will prefer no curb cuts on the thing that's Charles Drive. With the cul-de-sac configuration, what are you saying is a challenge to reduce this from ten lots to eight? It would require what now that would be a challenge?
The cost on the project of the new street that is created as well as the detention pond. Those costs are very high, very high, so we are needing the extra lots to just simply make up for that.
Okay.
So sidewalks, the streets and the detention pond, all of those things that are part of. The zoning requirements um, are what are creating our our need for the lock and thus the rezoning.
Okay, um, and and so the answer to the question regarding the delta. From ten to eight, you're saying that that does not work with your business model? Is that what you're saying?
Based on those particular ramp, uh, based under the current parameters of the need for the street and detention pond, yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Yes, and I also want to make sure we mention that. I want to make sure we're talking about, since we are using the delta theories, right? The bigger piece of the property, let me go back. Or actually, probably it's better to show it from here. Um, again, we're talking about two properties. So. What we are creating is the additional parcels here, but remember that we already have one separate parcel.
Correct.
Right, so I just want to make sure that we are understanding those numbers. So when we say that total number. We have to subtract by one because we already have one other lot that that could be built on.
And that has a curb cut on Washington that is currently there and in your proposed plan that would make.
That's that's correct.
Okay, all right, um, commissioners, any other comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, please stop screen share. Thank you. Um, and there's a motion made by Commissioner Love it. And a second by Commissioner Miller that this body recommends approval with the conditions as stated by staff. If there are no other comments, questions, or concerns, I'll call the question. All in favor, sound aye.
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 Okay, all opposed, sound nay.
Nay, aye.
Okay, staff, roll call, please.
Yes, since the chair, Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Mark Fields?
Nay.
Commissioner Joseph Fields?
Nay.
Commissioner Love it?
Aye.
Commissioner Fan?
Nay.
Commissioner Brian? Commissioner Presley?
Commissioner Brian, could you come off of mute, please? Okay, let's go to Commissioner Presley.
Commissioner Presley?
Okay, looks like we have lost Commissioner Presley. Okay, we've got one, two, three, four, five commissioners to have voted. There were. Two yays, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I was gonna read it, but.
Yes, please do. Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm 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 muted at this chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Bryant, your vote, yea or nay?
Nay.
Okay. All right, Ms. Solomon, you may read the results.
Yes, there are one, two, three, four nays and two yays, so the nays have it.
Okay, the recommendation, the motion um, fails and. This body is not recommending um, approval. Okay, now, yes, we need a new motion because the body is not recommending approval. I entertain a new motion.
Motion for denial, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Fan, second by Commissioner Mark Fields, so this body recommends denial. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller?
Nay.
Commissioner Mark Fields?
I'm, uh, this is for denial.
That is correct.
Sorry. Yes, for denial.
Thank you. Commissioner Joseph Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Love it?
Nay.
Commissioner Fan?
Aye.
Commissioner Brian?
Commissioner Brian, you're on mute. Okay, one, two, three, four, five. Commissioner Brian is on mute. Um, could you please? Um, could you please sound the results, Ms. Solomon?
Yes, they, there are two nays and three ayes.
Okay, so the motion carries, this body recommends denial. Okay. Let's now move to our last case on the agenda. That is case number two zero two three V as in Victor does zero zero two dash zero five. The address is three one nine eight Washington Road. Um, the case type is a variance. Staff, would you please sound the, the caption for this?
Yes, in reference to item number six, two zero two, three V dash zero zero two dash zero five, the applicant is Michael Salisbury. The property is located at thirty-one ninety-eight Washington Road. The applicant seeks a variance to expand an existing laundry facility from approximately one thousand seven hundred square feet to four thousand three hundred square feet in the C one neighborhood commercial district. The case type is variance.
Okay, thank you. And is the applicant present this evening?
Yes, I'm present.
Okay, say your first and last name and your current address. And if you have any visual aids that you need to have on the screen, staff, would you please give, uh, Mr. Salisbury screen sharing capabilities?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mike Salisbury. I'm the applicant in this case. My address is three, four, six, one, Lee Street, Atlanta, Georgia. And I'm gonna have to pull up. So what the purpose of our application is to expand the laundry facility that's there without altering the footprint of it, to serve the community and be a part of East Point's revitalization. The goal of this is to expand the interior to include all the space under the current roof and to replace the old equipment with new high efficiency and water conserving equipment. We have pictures showing the condition of the current space, and we also have pictures of its most recently opened laundry, which is located near Wendy Hill in Cobb County. So this is the condition of the current laundry as.
Mrs. Salisbury.
Yes.
I'm sorry, we can't see any of those things. We see, um, a list of files.
Okay. Could Ms. Solomon pull the same material up?
Yes, I do have your, um, presentation.
Okay.
Give me one second. I'm restarting my email. It kicked me out.
All right, no worries.
Tyler, if you're able to pull it up, I did send the presentation to planning commission on Monday.
Okay, now we can see, I think, Mr. Salisbury's, um, screen sharing capabilities. Okay.
Okay, so I'm, I'm sharing my screen, correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So this is the current interior of the building. This is the current laundromat, which is approximately seventeen hundred square foot. This picture is the middle suite, which is approximately seven hundred square foot. This is its current condition. This picture was taken this week. And this is the rightmost suite, which is a little under seventeen hundred square feet. So this is the two conditions of the vacant space. This is the current laundromat as it stands today. This is what we're proposing to have in that space. This is a new ultra-modern laundromat. This one's located in Cobb County. All these machines are brand new. The condition of the building is modern. The colors are very attractive. And this is what we want to bring to East Point. So this is actual pictures of their current laundromat. At the very bottom, and I think this is somewhat significant, they've only been open for about four weeks and they've been able to get eighty-seven five-star reviews of the laundromat. So these are professional people who want to run a facility that's top of the notch, top of the, top of the market, top notch to bring this to East Point. That's, that's ultimately our goal here. So the renovation will all be contained within the current square foot. We're not going to alter the roof. We're not going to alter the parking lot and we're not going to really alter the exterior. So we're not growing or adding on. We're just renovating inside what we already have. Currently, we believe the building as it stands is somewhat underutilized. And I think as these pictures show, there just hasn't been a market to rent or lease out the spaces as they are. And the best use for these spaces is in fact to grow the laundromat and have the, the new updated laundromat take up the, the current spaces which have been vacant for longer than two years. They've already had an architect drops drawings for this space specifically, so they already are looking forward to getting started on this. So. I think one important part of all of this is currently, um, the, the maximum for a laundromat in East Point under a C one zoning is twenty-five hundred square foot. They could do twenty-five hundred with the, the current laundromat and the middle space. But that's going to leave the end space very hard to find a third tenant who's not necessarily going to either benefit or provide more foot traffic to the laundry. So that's why we really want to have the, the full space altogether to make absolutely sure we don't have this vacancy and have this kind of this space that we really don't know what the best use of it is. So what we're asking today really is if the, if the commissioners can disconnect the concept of square footage and instead sort of envision and conceive of what, what we've done in the past, which is an ultra-modern, clean facility, which is going to serve both the consumers and the community of large. And I'm open to questions.
Okay, are there any other proponents here to speak in the favor of this zoning case? Any other proponents? Hearing on and seeing on, are there any opponents here to speak against the zoning case? Any opponents to speak against?
Sir, I'm not sure. Did you hear me?
Um, I did not.
Uh, I had said I could speak for.
You're on mute. Would you please state your first and last name and your current address, Mr. Ferguson?
Yes, it's, uh, Richard R. Ferguson. My address is one, three, six, seven Ragley, R A G L E Y Hall Road, Northeast Brookhaven, Georgia. Three oh three one nine.
Okay, floor is yours.
Okay, I appreciate the opportunity. I just wanted to let you know that, uh, Mike and I were real estate brokers, real estate, uh, people. And we have been working in the, uh, East Point College Park, uh, market for a good bit of time. And one of our challenges, one of our challenges is, uh, a lot of the properties are in disrepair. Well, we mentioned East Point, uh, in marketing. A lot of people say, no, I don't want to go there. This property is a property that y'all would be proud of when it's done. It would be, um, much improved. If you looked at the pictures that Mike first showed, this particular, uh, laundromat that's there now. Um, tiles are coming up on the floor. The tiles are dripping down. Um, it's just not maintained. Um, the new, uh, prospective owner would put almost a million dollars into this. Uh, East Point, the south side would have a facility um, that the north side has. And I know a lot of times people in the south side say, you know, why can't we have this and why can't we have that? Well, here's an opportunity to have it. All that's required right now is for permission to grow that one additional, uh, space that's vacant. And the reason it's vacant is the current owner has a hard time trying to get tenants that are compatible with a laundromat. You're not going to have a law firm or a tax accountant or someone like that to go in next to a, a, um, uh, a laundry facility, even a nice shiny one. This building, um, is a small building and what we're really just asking for is to have the ability to have this one additional, uh, space. And, and, uh, we just firmly believe that it would be an asset for the community. There is a demand for it. Um, and if you, if he would like to speak, the prospective owner is, is also, um, uh, willing to speak for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of the zoning matter? Any other proponents here to speak in favor?
Yes. Okay. My name is Nikesh Primo. I live at three, five, seven, four Cantrell Road in Atlanta, Georgia, three zero three one nine. As Rick has indicated, I am the owner of the Smart Laundry in Marietta. And we are a part of the proposed team to get this variance pushed across. Um, after extensive market research and, you know, demographic search for this location, it is clear and evident that this city does not have up to the standard laundromat that it needs. Um, you know, to serve this large population of need, you know, we would require at least, you know, four thousand square foot property to serve the whole community. You know, we are really dedicated. My father's been in this business for thirty-five years and we've seen laundromats come and go. And, you know, we're prepared to bring what we bought to Marietta, to the city of East Point to benefit not only the citizens, but the greater outreach of, you know, businesses. You know, we're ready to prepare a professional, clean, safe laundromat that is operated with, you know, multiple cameras. We have sixteen cameras roaming at all hours. You know, we have touchscreen machines that can take all forms of payments. That includes cash, card, and even EBT, which most laundromat facilities will not provide. Um, you know, this, this type of quality of care and, you know, dedication to serve a large population, including East Point, you know, it, it goes without saying that it would really benefit a lot of people. And we truly believe that we can do that. And we'd love to have that opportunity, but it would only work if we can use that forty-three hundred square foot space, not only for, you know, to serve the entire population before a business model itself. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Prima. Are there any other proponents for this zoning matter? Any other proponents for this zoning matter? Hearing on and seeing on, are there any opponents to speak a, against the zoning matter? Any opponents to speak against? Hearing and seeing on, commissioners at this time are entertaining motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second? Been moved by Commissioner, moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, and we close the public hearing. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing on the ayes have the public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Will do. Uh, staff's recommendation for this variance request, uh, includes the review of criteria points that I will identify for the board and commission this evening. Uh, the city of East Point under the commercial zoning district, uh, does not have, one, a distance requirement for uses such as laundromats. Uh, we will acknowledge that there are existing laundromats, uh, located within the area, not specific in terms of a specific distance from this site. Um, the way that the code is written, um, as stated by the applicant as well, that, that there is a specific floor requirement for this particular use. Uh, staff will acknowledge that the site has been well-kept and maintained uh, for operational business, uh, within the city of East Point. And that you all have seen the applicant's, um, presentation for the interior view of what's inside of the building. But based upon what is outlined within the requirements of the code, uh, there wasn't, there wasn't enough supporting details to render a recommendation of approval based upon that information. So staff will consider, uh, to, well, we recommended denial of the applicant's requests, um, due to the city's requirement for the floor area restriction. And that also stating that the distance restriction for the proposed use, um, retains the limitation requirement for the maximum floor area. So again, we understand, um, that there is a hardship presented by the applicant, but the code, the ordinance does not support the proposed expansion. Um, I will be able to answer any questions that the, uh, commissioner will have for me this evening.
Okay, commissioners, we've heard from the applicants and we've heard staff's recommendation. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Joseph Fields, that this body approves this zoning application. And then are there any comments, questions or concerns?
The variance now is over, right?
Um, it's just generically, it's, it's the, the zoning case.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yes, just a generic. So yes, it is just a variance and this body is the final arbiter. And your motion is to approve and Commissioner Fields has seconded that. If there are no comments, questions or concerns, I am calling the question. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing on the ayes have that this body approves the variance. Um, we will now go to any announcements that there may be staff giving any announcements for the body.
No, sir.
No, no.
Thank you. Um, the only announcement that I will have, and I think that we have discussed this, this is, um, it's, it's, it's more of an announcement for commissioners, um. Our, our zoning case before, um, the Washington Road, commissioners, I do want to keep in mind that uh, we are recommending a denial for the, uh, the three, four, nine, zero, three, four, eight, zero Washington Road. Um, but also just to keep in mind that under the current zoning, the applicant could build six slots and increase the curb cuts along Washington Road. When staffs makes a recommendation for us, or even when an applicant comes to us, and the reason I was trying to get to a delta is because the applicant was requesting ten lots. This body has within its right that it could say, we approve eight lots. What I don't want to happen is I, I am hoping that something, um, as this moves forward and the applicant continues to want to build there, that there are not six lots with curb cuts all on Washington Road that will exasperate the traffic situation. Currently, the zoning would allow for that to happen, um, more curb cuts along Washington Road. So staff has a role that makes a recommendation. The applicant can ask for several things, but this body can decide what it would recommend moving forward. Um, I'm hoping that whatever happens on the lot does not become a detraction or, um, further clogs up Washington Road because it does get backed up. It does get clogged up. And so I just want us to keep that in mind. Um, so because at this point it could just move forward, mayor council can approve it and the community has had some concerns. I get that and we've talked about some things. But, um, we can also play a greater role and so for some of those things, then I think that, um, we will talk about those and hopefully come to something that will benefit, um, the community and all others involved. I don't have any other announcements?
Let me just say something about that, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Fan.
And the, uh, 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 can you ask the gentleman to leave this, you know, as we, we're discussing? That, was this still on?
There, there's, they're still on, but we're in a public meeting. And so it's not a personnel matter. I don't think we could go into an executive session.
Well, I, I want to just say this, I just want to say this, is that council can always, um, remain the back. Well, I, I wanna just say this, I just wanna say this, is that council can always, um, remand it back to us uh, for us, for a decision, uh, if they feel uncomfortable with it themselves. But the final decision is on them. We just recommending to them, uh, what we recommend to them. And it's up for them to vote it up and down and remand it back to us and find out why we voted the way we voted. Uh, so, um, that, I want to be clear on that too. Because at the end of the day, we, that's why I asked about the variance and the, um, the zoning. And we're doing concurrent, for they, for them to understand that that's gonna be on the council. Ain't gonna be on us. We just, we just recommend a body on it. So, uh, that's, and I understand what you're saying here because I do understand the need not to have admitted curb cuts down Washington Road. Because it's already backed up. So I, I do understand that. So I just be clear.
Yes, you're exactly correct. And that's why I always try to emphasize that for those particular agenda items that the motion is in the form of a recommendation. Um, I can also state to that also Commissioner Fan that, um, it has been very rare, if at all, that council sort of does that. And I don't watch the council meetings, so I don't really know. But in, in, in my time here, we very seldom, if, oh, I can't even think of a time that it has been remanded back to us. But, um, I'd, so that's why I, I, I tried to make sure that we sort of address all of those things sort of upfront as best as we can. Um, particularly for those things where there, where, where the recommending body. Commissioner Mark Fields, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, and, and I agree with you, um, you know, I drive up and down Washington Road daily to go to work. And, you know, I'm affected by that traffic, just like every, everyone else who lives in that area. I also know, you know, as we are wanting the city to grow and we want more things, uh, more housing and, and to take these things into account. Um, I, I appreciate what they want to do in that two, almost three acres. And if there is a way for, you know, the community and them to come together to achieve that, um, I was hoping that maybe that they could get together and have a conversation and figure that out as well. I, and, and maybe I'm being too hopeful, but that's, that's, um, what I would hope.
Yes, and, and because right now, the thing that I always try to stress is that I understand when you, if you've lived in an era for so long and it has just been wooded, you are accustomed to it being wooded. But if it has a zoning, then something can be built there. And so then let's try to figure out how do we come to some kind of, um, um, compromise on that. That's why I was talking about the delta, you know, can we reduce that by a lot or two? Um, because right now houses can be built there. And, you know, the, the, the second, um, um, the alternative that the applicant presented had curb cuts on Washington, curb cuts on Charles. I, that, it's just, just too many. But if, if this goes through as a denial, the applicant has every right to go and build exactly that. And then it exasperates that situation over there. So I think that we have to be careful about those things and trying to make sure that we have smart growth. You'll have traffic coming in and out on Charles. You have traffic coming in and out on Ben Hill. You have traffic coming in and out on Washington Road. So while some may say, well, this is a victory. This first decision is a recommendation for denial, but is it really a victory for what you're seeking? You're seeking to minimize the impact on traffic. You're seeking to minimize disruption and all of those things. And so if it goes forward and our recommendation is upheld to deny, then the applicant said, okay, well, then I'll just go in and I'll just build it like this. And then that's what we have. And there's not much recourse because our law allows for that to happen. And so to the extent that we're able to mitigate some of those things as a part of our deliberative process, then that's, I think, a, a, a contribution or a part of our service to the community and to the city. And with all of the things that we always say that we want, citizens have to also realize that those things are not gonna come without rooftops and disposable incomes. You can wish for something all you want, but it won't happen unless the businesses see that there's, um, a sustainable source to support those businesses. And I, just as I push back on goldbirds, um, I think it's a slap in the face to the citizens of East Point to say, we'll have tractor trailers two to three days a week to bring in fresh food. But the citizens can't go get any? Don't pimp us out like that. I mean, we, staff, everyone, we, we have to play a role to make sure that we're helping to bring amenities to our citizens so that they can live, work, and play right in East Point and don't have to drive or go wherever to get those things that they want to see. Commissioner Lovett, and then we will wrap up our meeting. Your recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say thank you to the, um, residents that came out to support their community and to share their, their wishes. And it did not go unnoticed on my part. I really, really appreciate the input. I know that growth is inevitable. Even if you own the property, you can be pushed out around. And, um, and there are laws that will support that. But I, I just really am, am interested in growth, smart growth. And I know that we have to have the rooftops to get some of the amenities that we want in this community. And so with that, I would hope that we can all begin to open up to inevitable change. And you were right, Mr. Chair, when you said you, we get used to the trees that are in our neighborhoods, but if you don't own the property, it's gonna grow. Thank you.
Absolutely. Commissioners, at this time, thank you so much for indulging in, um, your contributions to this announcement. Um, one of the privileges from the chair. So at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Or turn.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in property second. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing on the ayes have this meeting is now adjourned. Have a great weekend, everyone.
Have a great night.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good one.
So much.
Good night. Enjoy your vacation, Mr. Chair.
No, he's gone. He's enjoying.
He's gone. It's over with.
Good night, everyone.
Right, be safe. Thank you.